Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 12th, 2025 meeting of the Alachua County School Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now Ms. Rollo is going to introduce our performers for this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Patton, and District Administrators. I'd like to start by recognizing our student artwork in the boardroom this month. On Boards 1 and 4, we have artwork from Glen Springs Elementary School, Katie McDonald, art teacher. On Boards 2 and 3, in the center, we have artwork from Parker Elementary, Sarah Zadonik, art teacher. And on Boards 5 and 6, behind me, we have artwork from Hidden Oak Elementary School, Pam Adams, and Julie Dillon, art teachers. I would like to extend my personal thanks to the art teachers for bringing our boardroom to life with their incredible student artwork this month. Onto performances. For 40 years, March has been designated Music in Our Schools Month, the time of year when music education becomes the focus of schools and communities around the nation. The purpose is to raise awareness of the importance of music education for all children, and we are especially grateful that we live in a community that recognizes the importance of music and arts education through the support of the One Mill. This year's theme for Music in Our Schools Month is "United Through Music." And this month, our teachers and students are uniting across the district to put on a series of concerts to highlight their talented students and their music programs. A list of concerts at our elementary schools can be found on our website. And our band students from across the district are currently uniting to rehearse for the Alachua County Honor Band Concert, which will take place at the Phillips Center on March 27th at 7:00 PM. And speaking of bands, tonight, we are joined by members of the Gainesville High School Band, under the direction of Bill Peiser. The GHS Band has a longstanding history of earning straight superior ratings at district and state music performance assessments, and this year was no different. Just last weekend, the GHS Band earned straight superiors once again at district music performance assessment, with a truly stellar performance onstage and in the sight-reading room. Tonight's performance is a saxophone quintet, featuring Ethan Henderson on soprano sax, Sam Tibbetts on alto sax, Isaac Block on tenor sax, Tim Gulbranson on baritone sax, and Nathan Farrell on the djembe. They performed this piece at district solo and ensemble on February 14th and earned a superior rating. They will perform "Strange Humors" by John Mackey. Please welcome the GHS Saxophone Quintet, under the direction of Mr. Bill Peiser.
That was phenomenal. Thank you so much, and thank you to Mr. Purzer for teaching you all. I particularly enjoy hearing a saxophone quartet plus drums, because I played saxophone in middle school tenor, in fact. So, does anyone else have anything? Dr. McNeely?
Students, I certainly have to go along with the chairwoman, because it was exceptional. And I almost wanted the audience to continue to clap, so that we could have an encore. But I know we are limited to time, and we appreciate you so very much. And hopefully, I don't know if you're seniors, juniors, or what your classification it might be, but we hope that some of you will return another time.
And just wanted to say, I had a quick chance to talk with these nice young gentlemen that were sitting in the front, and said that I played two of your saxophones from 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, but your baritone sax, when you hear "Pompon Circumstance," and we go again, those three notes, da-da-da-dun, that's the baritone. So, I always remember that. So, looking at that, I think it's what we do in high school, we remember those moments. So, thank you for helping remind us of great moments.
And just one of my favorite things about music is the storytelling aspect of it, and you could really feel that in y'all's piece, especially the beginning, where it's really melancholic, and you're building that tension. And then, once you go into that release of like, it's like a drum solo, is that what I would call this in this context? I could just feel that. I felt pulled on this journey, whatever adventure it was on. And I just really appreciate that, making me go someplace that, you know, isn't always here. And that's, thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Peiser, and all the parents. And thank you, Ms. Rollo, for setting that up for us. That was absolutely wonderful. And now, I'd like to recognize Ms. Costemo has a special presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Patton, Dr. Rockwell, Board Members, staff, and guests. Landon Strack and I are here tonight to receive a presentation and a check from the Gainesville Women's Club Festival of the Trees event. Last year, they committed, for their first year, to help raise some scholarship money to help some kids attend Camp Crystal. We've partnered with the Education Foundation as our fiscal agent to collect contributions for scholarships. And we're so fortunate to have so many community partners in Alachua County Public Schools, and we're very grateful to the Gainesville Women's Club and the Festival of Trees events for choosing this cause.
Good evening. My name is Landon. I'm the director at Camp Crystal Lake. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, with the unwavering support of the community, combined with the generous contributions from the Festival of the Trees and other funds raised, we will be able to offer scholarships to 22 Alachua County students. These scholarship recipients are not just attending camp, they are becoming a part of a cherished Camp Crystal family that spans over several generations. I have the great pleasure of getting to know and working with our scholarship recipients. To shed some light on the impact that camp can have for a child, I'd like to share a short story that speaks volumes. On the very first, on the first night of every camp session, we have cabin bonding, time built into the day, and we refer to it at camp as Cabin Night. It is a longstanding tradition, where a cabin plays get-to-know-you games, and a sweet treat of smores are enjoyed at the end of the day, right by a fire, just before heading back to the cabins. This past summer, I was making my rounds to the different groups during Cabin Night, and I made my way over to a student that I knew was also a scholarship recipient. What caught my attention was that they appeared visibly concerned and maybe even a little bit upset. Thinking that they were experiencing some sort of homesickness in an unfamiliar place, I asked them if they were okay. They then proceeded to tell me that they were worried. When I asked what they were worried about, they explained to me that they had heard that their cabin group was going to be having smores later, and they were nervous, because they didn't know what that was. Typical statements I frequently hear at camp when it comes to the theme of smores would be, "When are we having them?" or "How many spores can I eat?" I then had the amazing opportunity of teaching a well-deserving child how to roast their first marshmallow and indulge in their first campfire made via smore. A true core memory made at Camp Crystal Lake. This effort to raise scholarship funds truly showcases the transformative power of unity and community collaboration. Together, this will create meaningful opportunities for our youth and truly embody the spirit of giving back. Thank you for your continued support in shaping a brighter future for our children.
So, I'm pleased now to introduce to you our partners and friends, Karen Scarborough and Mary Brandenburg. These ladies are members of the Gainesville Women's Club, and Karen was the former volunteer coordinator and hired me 25 years ago in November, and Mary was my 7th grade teacher a few years before that. So, they were the chairs of the Festival of Trees for the last two years, and I welcome them.
Thank you. We get to do the fun part. We get to give you a big old check. We're excited about that. We were able, this year, to raise much more than we did last year. Could not have done it without the help of our school board partners before, during, after. Dragging tables and putting things away was really a great help to us. So, we're excited to be able to tell you that we're going to have another Festival of Trees, November the 20th, and hope to see you there. And they have decided, the chairs, the new chairs of Festival of Trees have decided to continue the scholarships to Camp Crystal. So, you've got another year with us. So, you've got the big check. So, we're going to present you tonight with $8,000.
Thank you very much to the Gainesville Women's Club for supporting our mission of making the summer camp, sleepaway camp experience, available to students in our community who otherwise wouldn't have that opportunity. And now, I'd like to recognize our ACEA Union for their updates. I see Ms. Ward and Dr. Testman.
Good evening, Board Chair, Rockwell Board Members and Staff. I'm Carmen Ward. I have the honor of being the ACEA President. We have a lot of union members in the room, rank-and-file teachers and ESPs tonight. And tomorrow, we have collective bargaining at 4:30 in this boardroom. That is, hopefully, where we will get a salary proposal from our board team. And I think there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of comments tonight in the room about the respect that we would like to see at that collective bargaining table. And I do want to also mention that tomorrow at 8:00 PM, there is a national union meeting. It's a joint meeting between the American Federation of Teachers and the National Education Association. It is about the attack on the Department of Education. And there is going to be a "We're Red for Ed" next Wednesday, which we will be on spring break, but on social media, "Where You're Red for Ed" on March 19th. So, I do want to announce all of those things, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Testman.
Chair Rockwell, Board Members, Superintendent Patton, District Staff, good evening. I'm Crystal Testman, the Service Unit Director and Instructional Vice President for ACEA. In 2025 so far, we have sadly lost some of our treasured union members. We thank the district for honoring them, but would also like to proudly remember them here tonight. They are Rudy Mann, a union icon, Leonard Marshall, a valued teacher, and Yula Williams, who kept her light shining in our schools until the impressive age of 93. I do encourage all union-eligible employees to join your union, ACEA. In the education support professional world, we have completed this year's first bargaining survey, and I am preparing to meet with groups of ACEA members from different job titles, starting tomorrow, to hone in on their concerns prior to opening bargaining for the 25-26 year. Also, I just sent all members information on our upcoming class, Free to All Union Members, who want to prepare for the para protest. Thank you to all of our members. We are here for you always.
Thank you, Ms. Ward and Dr. Testman. If you have an empty seat next to you, I know there are three up front here, could you raise your hand if you have an empty seat next to you? If you're standing in the back, there's several empty seats. You can come forward and... All right, on to adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I want to have one question. I'm wondering if we moved to approve, adopt the agenda as presented.
Moved by Ms. Sirdan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vu. Are there any questions, comments, or changes that need to be made?
C4 that was added.
Sorry? C4 was added.
Since it was posted. Oh, okay. An item that was added since it was posted, yeah.
From last week.
Yes, it's on the current agenda that we have.
And, I'm sorry, will it be possible for us to move up D1, the Citizens Field Discussion? Because we have some guests in the audience that would be helping to speak to that.
That's why I had...
Oh.
Would you like to move that to before the consent agenda?
If that's possible.
Absolutely.
After citizen input, after citizen, the first...
Thank you for that consideration.
So, the discussion of Citizens Fields will be moved up to just after Citizen Input and before the consent agenda? Are there any other changes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Onto the approval of the school board meeting minutes from February 18th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So, move.
Moved by Dr. McNeely. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sirdan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Onto Board Member and Superintendent announcements. Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me say that again. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say to the citizens who are here tonight and listening from home, it has been a special time reading two great students over at Williams Elementary. It was so much fun. I worked with the second graders, and they were right on it. They said, "We've heard that story," and I felt so badly, "but that was the book given to me," and we still had a lot of fun enjoying the story. To the staff and to the persons in charge of the Williams Read-In, thank you so much for that invitation.
Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Same thing. It's a few things, too. I was reading a few classrooms this week. I just want to thank Sarah Poe for inviting me to her class. It was really great. She had a great class, and it was really fun to come in the next day and surprise the principal. Apparently, we were rivals in the book bracket. We ended up both losing, but I was the first loser, so it did not go great for me in that competition. And then also to Gina Rivera, I watched her math lesson. I want to thank you in the audience here. Oh, hi. Just thank you so much. I learned so much about just what it takes to, for an elementary school teacher to give a full math lesson and to make it fun and make it interactive and make it to where kids want to do it, and that was just so fun. And also thank you to Cassie Villalas, and she's a teacher at Lincoln Middle School, Ms. V. I went and spoke to her civics class, and just, again, the curiosity of her students and just how honestly, like, well behaved they were, how they were, like, on task, and how you could tell how much relationship building was really important in maintaining that classroom. And so, I just really appreciate her setting that example, you know, out of Lincoln for me. I also went to the Stephen Foster Wax Museum for Black History Month, and I'm going to tell you all, I didn't know it was a living history wax museum. I was expecting a bunch of sculptures, so when I came in, it was just all these kids dressed as historical figures. So, it was really amazing. They were all reciting, you know, facts and the histories and the stories behind the person they were representing, and just seeing that and seeing how involved they were and how much research they had done was just really cool. And then also, too, we went to the Spelling Bee, and I think we had our first two-time winner ever. So, congrats to Cooper Campan. Just, that was amazing. Two times, I can't spell, so, yeah, they definitely beat me after, like, round five. But, uh, thank you. But thank you.
I also read in Ms. Poe's classroom, and that was great fun. I read a book called Martina, the Beautiful Cockroach, which, so students, we learned about the phrase oxymoron and what that means, because usually we would not consider cockroaches beautiful. And I also attended a Women's History Month brunch, which was a lovely event. Dr. McNeely was there as well. It was a wonderful event. Dr. Patton.
Thank you. Just wanted to just say thank you for two of our employees that recently passed and all their years of dedication. Yula Mae Williams, who was, if you know Williams Elementary, you thank her. She was an incredible paraprofessional that just recently passed, and just want to thank her for her many kids that she helped influence over the years. And also Henry Kinsley, who is also a longtime dean at Horizon. Again, if you know that school, that's a name that's synonymous. So we just thank them and want their families to know we were thinking of them. In addition, we had our first-ever data dialogues with our principals and our assistant principals this past week, and they just did a phenomenal job and want to thank them. It was a new way to look at data, and they did a great job. Even the assistant principals shared content, and we'll tell you a little bit more about that at the workshop on Friday. Hard to believe that 100 days already went by, so had the opportunity on our website, you can read about my first 100 days. A lot happened in 100 days, so just wanted to let you know that's there and available. But I really continue enjoying visiting our schools from elementaries to middles to high schools, some of our special area schools, and just the amazing things that happen with our kids and then community events. And I also wish all of our employees and our students a wonderful spring break that starts up on Monday, well, actually, Friday night starts up for the week, so we hope that everybody has a chance to rest up and enjoy and recharge their batteries. And then also, Mrs. Johnson, if you won't mind sharing our video with a few highlights for folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patton and Ms. Johnson. And now we will move on to citizen input. Because we have more than 20 citizens signed up, we will have two minutes per speaker. There will be 30 minutes now for citizen input, and anyone who's signed up to speak, who doesn't get to speak during the initial 30 minutes, will be able to speak at the end of the meeting. Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, our first three speakers are Danny Perez, David, and I'm sorry, it's hard for me to read, Floret, and Michael Rubenstein.
I'm here today to address the recent ACPS ICE memo regarding ICE's broad powers to remove children from their classes, interview them, and/or detain them. As a concerned community member and a former South Florida teacher, I would like to know the school board's plan to address the likely impact that this will have on students' emotional and mental well-being, which should be your top priority. The CDC has found that students with traumatic experiences are two and a half more times more likely to fail grade. Moreover, students impacted by trauma are unlikely to perform at grade level and are more likely to be expelled or suspended. As there is a nationwide mental health crisis affecting schoolage children, and as the current anti-immigrant campaign is heightening trauma, what concrete steps are going to be taken to address the impact on all students? How is it promoted to students and children, and what languages will this be offered in? We saw recently the tragic news of Jocelyn Wahu Curenza, who took her life last month due to bullying over her immigration status. This is a direct result of anti-immigrant hate in our country. It is your responsibility to take action and ensure the safety of all students. Thank you.
Parents, and I hope that everyone, as a parent, would agree with me on this. The worst thing would be for a child not to come home. Allowing ICE into our schools is a parent's worst nightmare. Please, please, I beg you, do not inflict this upon any parent. Thank you.
My name is David Flores. I'm here today as a parent, concerned parent on that, to speak against the federal government's decision to allow ICE access to our schools. I want to be clear, this is not just an issue for immigrant students. This decision threatens all students by creating an environment of fear, racial profiling, and trauma that will deeply impact our schools for years to come. When ICE is allowed in schools, it doesn't only affect undocumented students. All children, our children, regardless of their immigration status, experience fear, anxiety, and distress when they see their classmates, their friends and best friends, and even their own family members being targeted. Children should be focused on learning, but instead they will be preoccupied with the constant fear of their loved one being detained or deported. Beyond the emotional toll allowing ICE into our schools opens the door for racial profiling. And let's be honest, ICE will not be stopping every child in the hallways to check their paperwork. Instead, they would use racial and ethnic markers to decide who they believe looks like an immigrant. This means any U.S. citizen, especially Latinos, Black, and other non-white students are at risk of being profiled, harassed, or wrongly detained in their own schools. Furthermore, Mr. Delaney, U.S. Supreme Court case, Payer versus Doe, from 1982, guarantees all children the right to an education regardless of their immigration status. If ICE actions result in students staying home out of fear, this could violate the legal precedent that's already been established. So I'm calling the school board to pass a resolution to declare ICE cannot enter our schools without a valid judicial warrant, prohibit school staff from cooperating with ICE enforcement, and ensure our school employees are trained on how to handle ICE encounters and know their rights.
Thank you.
If I could, please remind all speakers to say your name at the microphone when you get to the podium. Our next three speakers are Sherny Bellamy Foltz, Kevin McMahon, and Ted DeBracki.
Sherny Bellamy Foltz, good evening, Board. I'm taking this time once again on a busy Wednesday to come here and to talk about the frustration that has been happening around the lack of coming to an agreement on a raise for us teachers. As my Schools Teacher of the Year, Site Tech, ACEA Representative, SAC Member, PTA Member, and ACTLC Member, I'm definitely not here to tell you how to do your job, but I am here to let you know that as a representative of this district, that I am somebody who was fearful of what this district has become and the lack of movement regarding how you're remedying any of it. I think it is truly insulting to be offered such a measly raise of 1.6% when we all know that this economy is experiencing high inflation. I also think it is truly insulting that I have been to every single bargaining agreement meeting, not counting the two canceled meetings by your team, and both times we were met with your side of the bargaining team not having anything to bring to us, yet teachers are doing the work. We are showing up in overcrowded classrooms, we are experiencing abuse, we are working beyond our work hours, we are losing planning time. We are asked to do more and more and yet are met with zero communications when we email you, we are met with no callback when we leave voicemails, we are met with little to no explanation when asked why it's taking so long to find us a reasonable and equitable raise. Yet the loudest I'm hearing anyone on this board is when it's time to be here. So please hear me now. Please care about this moment in time right now and what it says about each and every one of you. Where do you stand in all of this? Because I'm hearing very little from anyone on this board outside of here. Please do what's right and offer us a fair raise. And please give us our short days back. That planning time is valuable to the students we all claim to care about. Thank you.
My name's Ted DeBracki. I'm actually here to speak on three different topics, and I'll try to get through them. The first one actually came out of a meeting in Newbury with some of the people involved against the charter school where they had a meeting at the Lois Fordy Park. And one of the conclusions there was that student discipline was lacking and that cellphones were a big part of that. And actually, last year, when the student discipline policy was being approved, you approve it every year or reapprove it, I mentioned that the whole policy on cellphones there was pretty confusing and suggested that there be a nice, clear opening. And literally, I will not read it from my cellphone, but that state law that was passed in 2023 actually has a really nice summary about that students are not allowed to use cellphones unless directly commanded by their teachers. The second item, much quicker, is impact fees. I know I've spoken to the board two years ago about that. The city of Newbury has invoked an impact fee. I think the county has one also, and really the school board and Alachua County Public Schools should have one too. I know that many years ago, they tried to do that, and there was some issues, but we don't need to get into that. The final one is basically the Twirliger schools. And I say schools because there's the new one and the old one. The new one right now is vastly underutilized. Now, that could have been partially cured by the rezoning that's been paused. But then there's also the old Twirliger school, and I think that could be a lynchpin, that location could be a lynchpin for rezoning and capacity problems if it's reutilized. Thank you.
My name is Kevin McMahon. I'm a civics teacher at Howard Bishop Middle School. And before I begin, I'd just like to voice my support for those who are coming out against ICE's presence in our schools. No to ICE, no to Trump, no to deportations, no to privatization. But that's not actually what I came here to talk about. I wanted to talk about the lack of progress on a deal for teacher salary negotiations. I, like the previous speaker, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, came to several of these negotiation meetings. Two of them ended up being canceled. And I just wanted to say that as a district employee, a teacher who pours my heart and soul into my job, I was really disappointed that the board could not come up with any kind of proposal. And furthermore, when it was delayed, it was delayed again. I felt very disrespected, to be honest. And I'm hopeful that with the country going the way it's going, with the job market kind of exploding, with the current economic policies being put in place, that this school board would see the importance of a strong local government that can really steer the schools towards a brighter future, not just for teachers, but for their students, which is of course why we are all here today. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Our next three speakers are Nancy Dean, Nicole Dean, and Gina Rivera.
I'm speaking to the issue of ICE in the classrooms. I've taught school in Alachua County for 36 years, and I'm still teaching for the Library and Community Health and Equity Institute as a volunteer. To me and to virtually all teachers, education is the key to a meaningful and rewarding life. We get to see eyes light up with understanding, and believe me, that's thrilling. But we were never trained, never, to hand students over to law enforcement without parent consent or warrant. Schools have always been safe places in which students could freely learn and be part of a community. When did teachers become wardens of the law? Our job is to teach and protect students, not to endanger them. What exactly are teachers expected to do? Teachers need training in order to understand and deal with student rights. They also need to understand their own rights, liability, repercussions, and moral ambivalence. And when did parents get lost in all of this? We need some concrete answers, plans, and perhaps some pushback to this potentially dangerous policy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Dean. I am the teacher of the Visually Impaired for Alachua County. Today, I'm going to introduce myself as Nicole Alexis Martinez-Malo Cortez, a proud second-generation immigrant. My grandfather came over on the Peter Pan flights, and I can't imagine if that was taken away when he was a child and ICE came into his school and took him away. Where would he go? Think about that for a second. I originally wasn't going to speak on ICE because it is so controversial, and it scares the ever-loving goodness out of me, because I can't imagine watching a child get pulled from their classroom and never get to say goodbye to their parents. But that's not why I came up here to talk. I came up here to remind you what it says on that back wall, the same thing I told you all last time. We are committed to the success of every student. And about two meetings ago, Ms. McNeely proudly stood behind her defense that we need to keep the phones because we need to be first in something. I went back and listened. We need to be first in something. Why not be first in teacher happiness? Why not be first in teacher pay? Why not be first in supporting your teachers? So every student matters, and the success of every student matters. Because right now, I can tell you right now, we may be middle of the bar in the state of Florida, but in this community, we feel dead last. Teachers are posting on Gainesville Word of Mouth and other Facebook groups, asking what jobs are out there. I just saw one just the other day. I'm happy to pull it up and read it. Should have had it ready to go. Because they're tired of feeling... Should have had it ready to go. Because they're tired of feeling so insignificant. So not only are we feeling insignificant, we're being forced to hand over children. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. Hello again to the members. My name is Gina Rivera, by the way. Hello to the members of the board and district employees present. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the three board members who consistently answer my emails and have taken the time to come to my classroom and meet me in person. Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. Thank you, Ms. Surtin. Thank you, Mr. Vu. Now, as far as salary negotiations go, my point is very simple. You have not been transparent with your finances. You keep telling us that the budget is not there for raises above a 1.6%. You're asking us to believe you by faith, not evidence. And as a math and science teacher, I need to see the numbers. You keep saying you don't have Calc III, that the delay in getting those numbers has prevented you from showing us the evidence. But if you didn't have Calc III back in the fall semester, how did you justify only offering 1.6%? You must have been basing it on something concrete, or at least I sure hope you were using concrete numbers. Can we see those? You cannot possibly tell me that the financial department doesn't have numbers it works with on a daily basis. What is keeping you from sharing that information with us? I am asked to show data constantly at my school. Can you imagine if I keep telling my administration, oh, sorry, I have those numbers. I have no problem being transparent. But then I keep hiding those numbers from my superiors. How do you think it makes us feel when you won't show us what we need to see? It's suspicious. It is irresponsible, and it doesn't leave us feeling like we can trust you. I asked for these numbers back in January, and it is now March. Nobody could put together a simple presentation to share with us through email in the last two months? I am not interested in listening to more excuses. I need transparency now. I am an educated and understanding individual. If you prove to me with actual numbers that you cannot spend any more on our salaries, I will back off. But until then, you will keep hearing the squeaky wheel until it gets the grease. I also want to say, I'm wearing the button proudly. My name is Rivera. I'm a proud bilingual woman. I was born in Puerto Rico, came here to teach the children of Alachua County, and I will continue to do so even when treated like I am right now.
Our next three speakers are Joe Waddell, Monique Constantino, and Katie Martin-Guamonde.
Good evening, board members, superintendent. My name's Joe Waddell, and I've taught at GHS for the last nine years. On the topic of ICE, I guess it was two weeks ago, I wasn't able to stay for the whole meeting, but I sent you all an email asking for actionable, an actionable, step-by-step plan for what teachers are going to be expected to do if and when ICE or other law enforcement show up at our schools. I've heard from one of you, one of you. I'm making that request here in person. We need a plan. That's a lot of distress right now in teachers, is we don't know what's expected of us. You've told us what administrators are expected to do, but I'll be honest with you, I don't have a lot of confidence in the administrators in this district, period. Okay? So I would like to know that if they do show up at my door, that they've done their due diligence, and I can see some evidence of that before I don't get in the way. Because there's a lot of teachers who are willing to get in the way. Consequences be damned. As far as the salary goes, I certainly hope there is a proposal tomorrow. If there is not, this room is going to get even more crowded. And I think you all know that. So do whatever you need to do. Show Ms. Rivera the numbers. Do something other than delay, delay, delay. We know who else also likes to do that. That's all I got for you tonight.
Hello, my name is Monique Constantino. My son was a student in Alachua County when he was little, and I'm here because I saw the guidance that came from superintendent's office regarding what teachers were supposed to do if an ICE agent came into their classroom. And the guidance seemed to indicate that they did not need to see any kind of a warrant, and I found that to be completely ludicrous, unbelievably ridiculous. And I should say, I want to say that schools for our children must be comfortable, warm places for them to want to go to as much as possible. And our kids are faced with gun violence. They're faced with school shootings. They're faced with active shooter exercises. They have so much that they have to deal with. The least we can do is keep them protected from ICE and from Customs and Border Control. That's what we owe them, and that's what you members of the board deserve, need to give those students. They deserve that. They deserve that. We deserve, we need to treat our students better. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, board members, superintendent, district staff. My name is Katie Martin-Guamonde, and I am in year lucky 13 of teaching. Twelve of them have been in Alachua County. To begin, I empathize with you all. It seems that leadership at the state and federal levels makes a lot of decisions that local school boards and districts must react to. I'm talking about changes to ICE policies, changes to state standards and testing requirements, challenges to books in schools and classroom libraries, COVID, gun violence, and so much more. With each of these That's okay. No worries at all. Thank you. With each of these scenarios, the district and board has had to react, often with no additional funding. It cannot be easy to have had to make so many pivots. While it is unfortunate that so many decisions at the state and federal level affect our district, it does not negate the responsibility of the board and staff to do what is right for our students, our families, our teachers, our staff, and our community, in every case. Because what's at stake matters tremendously: our children. Switching to the other topic I came to talk about today, the bargaining negotiations. I am thrilled to learn that there is a bargaining meeting happening tomorrow. I'm eager to learn the details, as the 1.6% that has been proposed for months is insufficient. Yet, last check, there are 36 teacher jobs open here in our school district, but we do not have a teacher shortage here in Alachua County. What we have is a shortage of highly educated, highly qualified professionals who are willing to do a really hard job in a district that has many very well-paid district staff who seem to require increasing tasks of us while our paid planning time decreases, all in exchange for dwindling purchasing power of our paychecks. When highly qualified teachers leave, students follow. When I was a child, my parents taught me that actions speak louder than words. It's past time for action. Let's refocus our energy and resources on investing in our teachers, both time and pay, so that we can invest in our students. Let's streamline and prioritize supporting the instructional time we have with our students by restoring the extended planning time of weekly early release Wednesdays and increasing the efforts to pay us what we are worth to retain the high-quality teachers that have made this district exemplary for decades. Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Jennifer Molina, Zachary Olivos, and Jasmine Hall.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer. As parents, we leave our children in schools assuming they're going to be kept safe. Anyone entering any school, especially seeking to talk to any student, must go through protocols to identify themselves and the reason to being there. I am outraged and heartbroken at the school's policy. Your current protocol prioritizes state officials over our parents' rights. It is unacceptable that it has been weeks since ACPS realized guidance to staff regarding ICE entering schools, but nothing for students and families. When will this announcement be made for the families and the public? Everyone, you heard it from teachers. You're about to hear it from a student, too. We are frightened and concerned and seeking greater guidance from their schools and the district on how to handle ICE and other law enforcement agents. When will teachers and staff be provided more details and training on school protocol when law enforcement such as ICE shows up without a warrant? Kids shouldn't be concerned and worried about a classmate being pulled from school. They should be concerned about doing good in school and the next step to fulfill college. Let's do better and work together and stop this nonsense. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zachary. I'm a ninth-grade student at Beaux High School. Tonight, I want to express that no family should be worried about spreading their kid, worried about seeing their kids to school. It's inhumane having a friend, a classmate, being removed from class by ICE. We go to school to learn and become better individuals. We can't excel in school if we have to worry about law enforcement showing up any day to pick up a friend. If someone lives in Alachua County, that person is an Alachua County citizen. I want to know what's the district's plan to address the incoming drop in attendance and school graduation rates. I need to know, as I'm looking forward to my graduating in 2028. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Patton, Chairwoman Rockwell, and board. My name is Jasmine Hall, and I'm the Executive Director of AMI Kids Gainesville. Since 1991, AMI Kids Gainesville, a nonprofit organization, has worked within the local community to meet the needs of young people in Alachua County and their families who require a different setting or environment to be successful. During our time in this community, we have traditionally served young people who are under the supervision of the Department of Juvenile Justice in order to attend a DJJ Day Treatment Program, and we also served as one of the district's alternative placement sites. Despite DJJ's decision to end the day treatment model across the state, AMI Kids Gainesville has continued to meet some of the needs within the community by offering a GED Preparation and Workforce Development Program through multi-year funding available from the Children's Trust of Alachua County, the County Commissioner's Office, Community Agency Partnership Program, and funding received from the Department of Labor and the Florida Department of Education to offer career technical education and workforce development. But there is still a need in the community. Later, you will hear from Dr. Sabrina Richards, who can tell you more about the AMI Kids approach, some of the various models that AMI Kids can offer, and focus on two that may be of interest to the district. Thank you.
I believe we have time for one more speaker. Our next speaker is Dr. Sabrina Richards-Batiste.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sabrina Richards, and I am the Director of Educational Services for AMI Kids. It's a nonprofit organization that has been serving young people in need of intervention and support for over 55 years. And during that time, we've learned that young people who commit multiple disciplinary infractions that lead to suspension or expulsion, that are enrolled in a grade level lower than their peers, have challenges meeting attendance expectations, challenges with academic concepts, and experience or demonstrate difficulty regulating their emotions, they require and benefit from a specialized approach. AMI Kids has developed the AMI Kids Personal Growth Model as an approach to help meet those needs. And while we do have a few different models that are all customizable to meet the priorities of the district, there are two that we believe would be beneficial. The first is the AMI Kids School Support Model, where we can serve 60 students in a cohort and multiple cohorts in the year. And participants in that support model can experience increased student attendance, a reduction in disciplinary referrals, increased academic performance, student-driven academic progress monitoring, mentoring, healthier classrooms for your teachers, as well as healthier schools in your community. We can also offer a full-service alternative center in a school-in-a-school model. In a folder that's been presented to board members and our superintendent, there is a letter from the current Executive Director, a summary of AMI Kids Gainesville, a summary of AMI Kids Impact in the states and models that we operate and offer, and a summary of the AMI Kids Family-Centric Model, which is a free opportunity for young people and their families to benefit from in-home counseling sessions that we would like to share with students in your district. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to being able to develop a proposal that is in line with the district priorities. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers thus far. And if you signed up to speak and did not get an opportunity, we will have another opportunity for citizen input at the end of the meeting. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Patton for the discussion of Citizens Field.
Thank you. So an important partnership with us is the city of Gainesville. So I'd like to thank Mayor Ward, Commissioner Chestnut, City Manager Cynthia Curry, and the city's staff that's been working with Alachua County Public Schools and talking about Citizens Field. So this evening, we're going to have a presentation first from the city of Gainesville, and then our Alachua County Public School staff member Suzanne Nguyen. At that point, board members and our chair, the floor will open for your discussion. And to begin that presentation this evening is NV5 staff member who will be presenting the update on behalf of the city of Gainesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and of course, Madam Superintendent. On behalf of the city of Gainesville, my name is Cynthia Curry, City Manager. And of course, as already mentioned, I am joined this evening by our mayor, Harvey Ward, as well as, of course, Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut at large. I'm also joined by Andrew Persons, who is our Chief Operating Officer, as well as Roxy Gonzalez, who is the Director of Park Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Citizen Field, we've had a partnership with this school board since the early 1980s for the use for your athletic purposes throughout your schools. That agreement will come to an end not this school year, but the next school year, end of 2026. It's been in existence, as I mentioned, since the early 80s. The use of the field, quite frankly, of the stadium is in disrepair, as you can well imagine, over that number of years. We are in need of some serious improvements. This has been championed over the last year and a half by Commissioner Chestnut. It has been endorsed by our commission. We had a feasibility study a little over a year ago that recommended that we move forward with further consulting assistance to look at what our community wanted in that facility, and that has been going on under the consultation of NV5. They're here this evening under the leadership of Mr. Walpole and Laurie Hall, who will be giving the presentation. But this is a very serious asset in our East Gainesville area on Eighth and Waldo. The city is putting significant resources towards it to try to build it out. The stadium is a very important element of it. It is utilized not only by the school board, but by the community at large. And at this point, before we move further with meetings from our, with our community, we've had two so far, very well-attended, we'd like to get some feedback, of course, from the school board. So I am very appreciative, Madam Superintendent, of you facilitating this item being placed on the agenda this evening. And with that, the NV5 representatives, I believe it's Laurie Hall coming forward and maybe joined later by Mr. Walpole. But thank you so much for being here, and thank you for this opportunity.
Am I able to pull up the presentation from here, or is that? While they're getting that presentation pulled up, if you have an empty seat next to you, would you please raise your hand? We've still got some people standing. We've still got some people standing. If you'd like to come forward, there are seats available.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. I am Laurie Hall. I am with NV5 and Landscape Architect. As the city manager mentioned, we've got multiple members from the design team here to answer questions as well. So I'm going to give you guys just a very brief overview of some of the work that we've been doing, and then, like I said, really happy to answer any questions. So the project overview of what we're looking at, we're looking at the entire northeast complex, so not just Citizens Field, but all of the surrounding facilities. This map shows an outline of the facilities that are owned by the City of Gainesville. So it also includes the multipurpose fields, the DH Hunter Pool, which I'll also note is utilized by the school board. It's the pool that's utilized by the area high schools. It also includes some of the Gainesville Fire Rescue Facilities. So we started working on this project last year and have done a tremendous amount of public and stakeholder engagement, including open public workshops and different stakeholder meetings. I can share some of the community feedback that we've gotten, is that there's a lot of pride in these facilities. There's a lot of pride in the location of these facilities, but they're not working. The facilities that we met, including, you can hear representatives from the school board, from the high schools that utilize it, and there are things about the stadium that are just not working. We're all aware of that. The DH Hunter Pool also is towards the end of its lifespan. We also heard today that the pump facilities on that pool, the equipment on that pool, has a 10-year lifespan, and we're on year 20. So that's a facility that also needs to be replaced. The other thing that we've heard is that we want our kids to be able to be really proud of their facilities, proud of where they play, and for the facilities to positively reflect our community. So the final deliverable of this scope of work includes the development of preliminary site plan, the idea being then that the city commission would determine what a phase plan or what the approach would be towards construction and be able to move immediately into construction documentation and permitting. This scope of work is anticipated to be completed in June. So we've presented a couple of concepts, and I would say these are to be viewed as that, of just some ideas of how the site plan might work. I'll show both of these, and then zoom in specifically more on the stadium and the pool, as those being the items of most discussion tonight, but again, happy to talk about any of this. So this site plan looks at a new MLK Center, a new stadium, so you can see that orientation, as well as a brand-new competition pool. This second concept looks at, again, a new pool. This could also allow for a renovation of the stadium versus a brand-new stadium. And then, side by side, so you can see, I'll scroll down a little bit there, so you can see side by side how those set up. So we've discussed and presented a few different options, and happy to go into whatever level of detail to answer questions, but looking at how that orientation also impacts phasing of the project, and so offering some different opportunities that either the project could be phased over time or built all in one phase. So again, quick overview, but happy to answer questions. And as I mentioned, there are a bunch of representatives from the city, from the GCRA, and as well as the design team that are happy to answer any questions that you all might have about the scope of work.
So before you leave the podium, I'm going to ask Board members if they have any questions before we move on. Mr. Vu, I see your light.
I mean, you've come and you've given us some plans here. I guess my question is, you're coming to us, what are you asking from us?
So I think that's a question better answered by the city, for representatives of the city.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Madam Chair, if I might address.
Yes, please.
We are asking for partnership, and yes, some consideration of maybe how we move forward and some level of partnership from the school board. I know you're seeing the plans officially, really, for the first time. You may have, members of the school board may have attended some of the meetings, but at this point, we are really looking for some discussion amongst the school board and some direction for us. So as we move forward with scoping this project and doing an estimation of cost, we'd like to better understand how the school board might be interested in participating and helping to fund particularly the Citizen Field portion of this project. And so we'd like to get that discussion going, if we could.
Okay, so to be clear, it's a money ask. Okay.
Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Curry. And I didn't get your name, I'm sorry, but thank you for the presentation.
Your name is Laurie Hall, I believe. Is that your name?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. So we're kind of, I don't say fiscally constrained, but constrained in the sense of being able to make investments in a property that we don't own, the district doesn't own, and significant investments like that, because we have, the board has made, or the district has made investments in the upkeep and maintenance since we have been using it. And I, actually, my ask was going to be of my colleagues to direct our superintendent to get with you all and just ask if the city would entertain transferring just the Citizens Field portion to us, so that we could do some work with that. We could explore trying to redevelop it, and that way we could use local capital money to be able to do that. We can't, if you own it, the district is not able to put significant dollars into that, to help redevelop that. It's my understanding, but I will have to, I'm gonna look to my superintendent, and I'm gonna look to my finance.
So maybe what we could do is, how about Suzanne, how about you do your presentation, because some of the questions are already being answered in the presentation, then we can go back to that discussion. Is that okay?
That works fine for me.
Does Dr. McNeely have a question specifically for Ms. Hall or Ms.?
There was, Madam Chair, there was not a question. I wanted to thank the mayor, Mayor Ward, for allowing us, inviting us to come into his area and have a sit-down conversation about the needs from your aspect as well as ours. And I know we need to maintain and help, even though it's funding involved, colleagues. We need to have that in this section of our town, of our community. And I can't wait until Ms. Nguyen shares what she has, but I'm all for working with the city in some manner in getting this property restored and resurfaced for our students and the community. I shouldn't just say students.
Just to add, before we continue on to Ms. Nguyen, I do still feel like, even with the presentation, really in the dark about what the city's asking of us, I feel like we're given options, but without contribution or partnership options, because we don't own the property, we can't spend our general fund on it. That really limits us. So I don't, anyway.
Just to clarify, it's our capital funds we can't spend on it.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. We'd have to spend general, my bad. We have to spend general, not capital, and the general fund is some of the only funds that we can use to do things like pay our teachers, so.
Ms. Nguyen.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent Patton, and Board members. I'm Suzanne Nguyen. I'm the Director of Planning and Construction. We have, in our Facilities Department, pulled together as much information as we can with the different options that we have available for a football stadium, including Citizens Stadium. And so I'm going to run through those tonight. Again, as it's already been mentioned, the challenges we have are our inability to expend Elatua County Public School capital funds on property not owned by Elatua County Public Schools. The sales tax referendum did not include athletic facilities and cannot be used. Capital projects are used for all projects district-wide. The facility condition assessment, that's still coming, safety and security projects, HVAC roofs, IT, et cetera. We have limited capital funds, as everyone's aware. I just wanted to remind everyone of that. And so we're taking the approach of what options do we have, what's going to be the best and most cost-effective for Elatua County Public Schools. So you have in your package, and it might be easier to see in the paper copy, Citizens Field, we have the lease agreement through January, sorry, June 30th of 2026. After that time, we're going, whether we are going to Citizens Stadium and working in agreement with the city or doing something else, that's kind of the terminus of when we can use that stadium, as far as I understand. So we have to come up with some temporary solutions, because everything in here, there's going to need to be beyond June 30th of 2026. So those temporary solutions are pairing of school stadiums and doing a temporary stadium at both Eastside High School and Beaufort High School. Then we've got four permanent solutions. So I'm going to go through each one of those. The temporary solution options are, as I mentioned previously, temporary stadiums at Beaufort and Eastside, that has a capital expense associated with it, and the pairing of school stadiums, for example, Gainesville to Santa Fe High School, Eastside to Hawthorne, and Beaufort to Newberry. I know that that would be a challenge, but we've also been challenged with situations like our transition schools, and our staff and students and teachers have risen to the challenge of those temporary solutions keeping their eye on the goal, you know, the end result. So Eastside and Beaufort's temporary stadiums, a capacity of 3,000 per site would be needed, a max capacity. We've done, we've partnered with Ms. Ritter's team to find attendance information, and we're in the vicinity of a maximum capacity of 3,000. We also have, at this time, we have the ability to broadcast games through Huddle, which is also something that's a pay-per-view scenario. So we would have to make sure we had parking for fans. The capital, construction, conceptual costs would be in the vicinity of 2.6 to 3.2 million per site for temporary facilities. We would have to do ADA accessibility improvements, add stands, add some restrooms, and such as that. This temporary stadium scenario would not build out full restroom buildings. That would be very expensive to the tune of, if we did everything permanent, it would be in the vicinity of 14 and a half million per site. So, and the thing about this scenario is, it doesn't give Beaufort High, I mean, Gainesville High School a home. So this is what we were leaning towards, if not the pairing of schools. The pairing of schools would save those funds, those capital funds, and we're estimating the max of 6.4 million total for both sites, that could be expended on a stadium to accommodate all three high schools, including Gainesville High School. We would have increased field maintenance with the additional use at those schools, but it wouldn't be near the amount of money it would be, you know, to the tune of 6.4 million. We have done field maintenance at Citizens Field for around $50,000. So you might be looking at that each year, plus escalation, times three schools. The stadium options that we've outlined are, there's two renovation options, and I want to mention to the City of Gainesville and NV5, if there's any information, I kind of gleaned information from Ms. Curry's letter and information that I got from city staff to kind of come up with a synopsis of information. If there's anything that needs to be corrected, I would like to ask the city staff or NV5 to please interject. So we have two renovation options, and we have a build-new-stadium option. Old Terwilliger property that is in the process of being demolished right now has a build-new-stadium option. Lofton Horizon property has a build-new-stadium option, and so does Diamond Sports Park. I've provided a table of distances and times from each high school to each of these options, so you can look at that for your reference. The Citizen Field renovate or new stadium option, again, we can only expend district capital funds on property we own. The three alternatives include two renovation options and a new stadium option. The two renovation options are estimated between 8 million and 20 million. The new stadium option is estimated to be up to 35 million. This scope could be reduced, you know, when you get into doing design is when you really get into the details of the scope. The Citizens Field renovate or new stadium options, questions to be answered that we thought of as we were looking at this, is how will the parking be handled? How is the stormwater handled? What's the process for the stadium work scope definition? What are the city's expectations, the cost share, and how does this affect our decision? And what is the timeline? Old Terwilliger, building a new stadium, we're going to be completed with demolition in May. We're currently under contract to do, we've started demolition, as I've mentioned. This site is a 13-acre site. It would accommodate a new stadium, parking, and stormwater management facilities. The cost would be estimated around 22 million. The approximate timeline is two years for design and construction. Again, we're using that 3,000 capacity and 500 parking spaces. Infrastructure to the site currently exists. If this project is sold, if that's something the school board chooses to do, the funds can be used for capital improvement projects. We have multiple appraisal estimates, depending on land use and zoning changes, that would also take time. This is kind of a template of a stadium and parking outlay with stormwater on the east side on that 13-acre site. And these were the appraisals that we had when we were going through the demolition approval process, as you remember, this information was presented to you. If the decision is made to sell Old Terwilliger property, changing the land use and zoning would allow the maximum price and benefit for Elatua County Public Schools. So if you see, if you look on that chart, the flow chart, I've put a section there for selling Old Terwilliger and feeding those funds into the other options. Lofton and Horizon is a total of 174 acres that we built. There are wetlands and flood zone on the site. The 17-acre Old Terwilliger conceptual stadium layout was used as a template, and we did find a couple places that that would fit. This would also, this is kind of just high-level evaluation. We would have to do, if Lofton was chosen to be pursued, we'd have to do more detailed evaluation of wetlands, environmentally sensitive lands, et cetera. The cost also is, we're estimating to be 22 million plus added infrastructure to the stadium location on the site, where that's chosen to be located. Approximate timeline is two years for design and construction, again, with 3,000 capacity and 5,000 parking spaces. Diamond Sports Park is another location that we own. The, again, the template for Terwilliger works on that site. We've also done some conceptual layouts for a stadium and a middle school, high school combo, or a high school coupled with a stadium. We've done some conceptual work with that. This is outside the urban cluster of Elatua County. We'd have to go through the process of adding that area to the urban cluster, which would be a lengthy process. That would be one of the first steps. So this option would really extend the amount of time our students would be out of a stadium playing, you know, their home base. It's also the furthest away for all of the schools. Cost and capacity and parking is the same estimate, high-level estimate, based on using that template we used for Terwilliger. So I can take any questions, and if there's anything that the city or NV5 staff needs to add that I left out or may need to be corrected, I would like to ask for that.
So again, Board members, the idea was to give you all the options that we have, not just... not just one option. So I think what you hear, though, and just a quick summary, is that you do have four options. Each one comes with different thoughts, different processes. Knowing that Citizens Field, if there was some way that we would be able to generate a land, to have the land move over, one thing we didn't add to that is that it does then, we would make sure if we did that to meet FSHAA standards. That's our state athletic association because we wanna ensure that we can offer regional meetings, state meetings, and, and in reality, have a track that also opens up more sports there, too, and then also become an economic driver, how we see it, for the city of Gainesville. But that does require them to, in essence, turn the land over, otherwise, there's no way we can, with our budget deficits, take that on, on the general fields. Just remembering that Terwilliger, although we talked about it, is also, because it is an option. So again, our job was to be sure you saw all the options. What you didn't hear, and you would know that, but just to ensure people know that there's a second drawback to Terwilliger, just where it's located. That's a hard traffic spot to begin with, so we didn't mention that one in there. Okay, then, Lofton, that environmental, it's, it's there and it's available, but when you know the word environment, you never know what's gonna happen there, but it doesn't mean you couldn't do it. And then the last, Diamond Sports Field, as all of you are very aware, although plenty of property, just when it's so far away, it's a problem, too. So that's just a quick summary, so thank you, Susan, for that, but just to know that there are options, but each option has interesting things, and so we'll just open up for your discussion, then.
Before we start with questions and discussion, there are two citizens who have input on this topic.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to hear, have them speak first.
The speakers who have signed up are Bridget Johnson and Sheri Roberts. If you would come to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Bridget Johnson. I just wanna say real quick that Citizen Field has been a part of this community for as far as I can remember, and the kids playing on Citizen Field. So I think that renovating Citizen Field and keeping the sports team there and bringing, you know, doing what you need to do to keep the football team there, renovating that area to, you know, keep the community going there would be great for this community, and do what the county said they were gonna do, is working to build up the east side of town. I think moving it away from the east side of town is stepping back from what the county told us that they were going to do for the past 10-plus years towards building up the east side of town. If you're going towards taking the football stadium away from the east side of town, I think that's a step backwards, and that's, and I think Sheri had to step outside real quick, but she'll be back.
Mr. Delaney, if, if we call for citizen input on this item and one of the citizens is not here, what is the?
This is the chair's discretion.
Okay. I'll, I'll give her a few seconds, and then we need to move into discussion.
Ms. Johnson stepped out to check.
There are people out.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to discussion. Mr. Vu, I see your light.
It really, just based on this plan that we've gone over, it sounds like regardless, we're gonna need some type of temporary solution, right? And so just, even just starting with that step one, I feel like we're given two options with this, either find a way to schedule some, some more high schools, to go to other high schools to practice, play, or do the temporary, and I'm kinda like, I don't wanna spend, what was that?
And that's the problem.
$0.5 million to create two temporary stadiums. I'd rather do the, just, let's figure out the logistics, let's bust the kids, let's share the field while we come up with a permanent, at least just where I am, I don't know where everyone else is.
And that's the other point, we wanted to be sure people heard, because it was a lot of information that if, if we were to be able to get the field so that we could use capital dollars, it does save us both the cost of those temporary fields that could then be plowed into a permanent stadium. I think that's what you're, and then we would potentially need the city's help because for you to decide to sell the old Terwilliger property, we would want that rezoned to get the most value out of that money, so we'd like their support in trying to get that rezoned so that we could put more dollars into that.
And the, but, just to clarify, Mr. Vu said "practice." I believe the schools have their own.
Right, they have, it's the games, right.
It's having the capacity for an audience and restrooms and parking. They have practice facilities.
Right, right. And so you're correct, too, Mr. Vu, that what we would have to do, instead of just have two schools sharing, we'd have to have a few more for a few years, but again, the long-term benefit of not spending millions of dollars and putting it into fabulous type of a facility that then all of our teams can use for different purposes and more sports, too.
And it feels strange to create two temporary solutions that leaves one of our schools out.
I know, and then leaving out Gainesville, that would have to do something different, too. So it's a very interesting dynamic.
And then if I'm to make a comment on the other thing, I still feel like it's really unclear from the city's presentation of what the specific ask is of us. If it's here to build this new stadium of $35 million from our general fund, I mean, that's just a non-starter. That's over 10% of an annual revenue from a general fund, and that's $35 million that wouldn't go to teachers and students. So that's just a non-starter.
Dr. McNeely, I saw your light next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really liked the comment of what the citizen said. There may be other citizens that are here that didn't know that this is the time that they can get up and speak. I don't know how Mrs. Johnson is going to direct them to do that, but I'd like the pairing of the school stadiums, one of the options. I know that will be maybe a little bit uncomfortable, but this is not forever. This is just until we can get the temporary solution out, because the renovations will be done, they will be marvelous. The citizen who spoke first stated how long this stadium had been a part of the community. I think and truly believe that we need to, and I don't know if I can say this, Attorney Delaney, on it, so that we can decide what we can do with the property. But the sooner that we can come together and make this decision, the sooner we will get out of the pairing situation or the other options that could very well be on the table. But I think the pairing is a great possibility. It's not going to last forever, but as soon as we can get this together from the city and the school board, the quicker that we will be able to move forward, and so that our star teams, and they are all star teams, I'm not calling one out from the other, but we want all of the schools that participate at Citizen Field to have those opportunities not to stop.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for your presentation as well of the options that are available. And as I was going to say earlier, or just to kinda continue on with my comments from earlier, it is my desire as well to redevelop the field because knowing how important Citizens Field is to the East Gainesville corridor, and I'd like to really just offer a motion so that we can kinda move the process along. I'm not sure where it will land, but move that, we direct the superintendent to engage with the city manager and city staff to develop a plan for transfer of Citizens Field to the school board. The plan may include just an outright transfer or limit, or as well as an exchange of property for consideration of something along that line, and the superintendent can report back the findings with recommendations and we, for our approval. I think that's, so that we can kinda just move forward outside of discussion. We've, we've had the discussion, as I mentioned, and knowing that we couldn't spend capital dollars on it, we don't have the cap space in our general fund to be able to cover such a thing, so it would be more advantageous for us and be able to move the project along if we own the project, and it would fit into the desires of the community to keep it there. I hate that the two community meetings that were held on this project were held on our board meeting night, so we weren't able to come. They were both on Tuesday night. One was a first Tuesday, and I think another one was a third Tuesday, so it wasn't something that we were able to come and give any feedback on, but that's the motion that I'd like to offer. I'm not sure, I'm gonna get a second on that, and we vote on that.
Ms. Green, were you able to get that motion? Do you need?
Oh.
Okay.
You got the gist of, the gist of, I was asked to repeat, um, repeat it. So move that, we direct the superintendent to engage with the city manager and appropriate staff, city staff, to develop a plan for transfer of Citizen Field to the school board. This plan may include payment or in exchange for another partial of land as consideration for the transfer. The superintendent can then report back to the board with findings and recommendations for proposed agreement, for approval, for review and approval.
Okay, Ms. Sirdan, Ms. Sirdan has made a motion. Dr. McNeely has seconded the motion. Is there additional discussion of the motion, Mr. Vu?
I, I, I'm gonna talk out loud for a second, then I'll probably make an amendment. You know, thinking back to what Dr. Patton was talking about doing with the property and actually making it something that can host state-level championships, something that could actually be a revenue driver for the district, and something that we really need to start thinking about. Just the stadium's not enough to do that. If we have just the stadium, this just becomes another thing we're just constantly spending money on, and yes, our kids should have a nice facility, but if we're not controlling the whole property, we're not controlling parking, we're not controlling any other part of it, and that, to me, is really problematic, and so I would offer an amendment to the motion to not just about the transfer of Citizens Field, but a transfer of the entire property up to that scope.
Wait, you mean, you're talking about the pools and all of that?
The entire thing, yes. I want that to be in the scope of the discussion that we direct the superintendent to possibly have with the, the city.
Ms. Sirdan, do you accept that amendment?
Um, I, I think we should let our superintendent, and I, I wanna stick with the motion that we have because in my mind, and as, and we could talk about that as far as, I think it should just include just the field and a piece of that land. That's the conversation I had, I've had with a couple commissioners, not the whole complex. I don't think this, our district cannot afford renovating the whole complex, that's biting off more, but if we get the field, we can do what we need to do with the field and do that. So I think we should, we should empower her to, to be able to have those discussions and, and blow out what, what the city is willing and what we're willing to be able to do and bite off, so.
And that's why I just say, sorry, go ahead.
I also, I, I haven't had an opportunity to speak at all because a motion came up, so, but I, I actually, I, I would not vote for that amended motion because I actually was going to ask, I mean, the transfer of the Citizens Field property itself may even be beyond the scope. When, when I had spoke to Mayor Ward, we had discussed the possibility of, instead of the district contributing to the renovation of Citizens Field, perhaps in the plans that the city presented, another option might be that there were multipurpose fields that would, would be created, that would be turned into actual soccer fields that would then need to be maintained, and so depending on what the city wanted from us, that, you know, the transfer of Citizens Fields and us taking that on might be an option, but I know from my understanding of the budget, if we were to take that on, it would be a renovation rather than a full redevelopment and redesign. If the city was more interested in a full redevelopment and redesign, it may make more sense for the district to take over those multipurpose fields and perhaps the wastewater, or not wastewater, stormwater management, and that, and then that would be like, we could contribute to renovating that section and maintaining that section if it worked better with the scope, because, you know, we're trying to build a partnership with the city, and the city has, has money for this. We could have money for this if we owned a portion of the property, but it's, you know...
If you own the stadium, you could do what you want with it.
Right. So I, I...
And the stadium would have to be, if that's the way you go, too, including somehow or another the parking, because I know the city manager and I talked about that, too, because you can't have a field without some kind of an agreement with parking.
So, you know, I, I would personally want to empower the city manager and the superintendent to kind of hash out what the details that would make the most sense, both for the city and the school district, because, again, I don't want our lack of funds to mean that the scope of the project is less for our students and community, right? So, so that's, that's just my feedback. I would, I am, I'm okay with the motion as presented by Ms. Sirdan and seconded by Dr. McNeely. I just want, I wanna make sure that it gives, I wanna hear from Ms. Curry that it gives you and, and Dr. Patton the ability to negotiate in ways that are mutually beneficial.
If I might, Madam Chair, the leeway to have that discussion with the superintendent is absolutely welcomed. I wanna mention that tomorrow, the city commission will also be discussing this. These are the beginnings of some very long conversations and discussions and negotiations if, in fact, we go in the direction of some sort of partnership with the school board. And this conversation tonight is good in that it sounds like there is an interest in having these conversations and potential negotiations that may end up with a partnership. I just don't know what that looks like. This is a large project. It has engaged the community over the last year. I know many of the community members are interested in seeing this go forward with the school board as a partner. I can't speak, of course, for the commission tonight. They're gonna start discussions tomorrow relative to what you are discussing tonight, and hopefully, uh...
And we'll, we'll be there tomorrow, and I, I think, our chair, you're gonna be able to attend with us?
Um, that meeting is midday, correct?
It is.
One, one o'clock.
One o'clock, yes.
Yes.
And we'll have our staff with us, too. I'll be there along with the staff.
This, this is the beginning of good conversation, hopefully, for the community, and I look forward to continuing it.
Thank you.
You think the motion as presented, Dr. Patton, gives you the leeway you need?
I think gives us the leeway we need.
Okay, perfect. Is there any other discussion of that motion?
So I think we need to see if we've got a second for the amendment.
So we have our, oh, I'm sorry. We have one of our commissioners here today, too. So we, we, we thank you for being here tonight and just kind of leaning on you that if we end up needing to listen to rezone Terwilliger to help our city and help us, so it's lovely that you're here tonight, so. Okay, all right. Well, thank you for being here tonight also, though.
Ms. Nguyen has a comment.
One thing I wanted to remind everyone of is the limitation of our, the limited capital funds that we have for all of the work that we need to do, and we do own properties where a stadium can be accommodated, and if we purchase a property or trade a property of ours, that will, in essence, cost us more money to do Citizens Field. I just wanted to mention that. And the other piece that concerns me is the length of time the negotiations can take because, just something to keep on your radar, because the longer the negotiations take, the longer the design and construction takes, and the more time our students won't be in a sta, a permanent stadium playing. Just things to keep in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Vu?
Last comment, I swear. Yeah, I really liked that feedback, Ms. Nguyen, because, you know, when I think about our facilities and limited capital funds we have, we have a bunch of facilities that are falling apart, and even just on our consent agenda item here is something from Lincoln Middle School dealing with the HVAC, and that's $800,000, something that needed to happen five years ago, really, you know, and we're just now finally getting around to it, and I still remember being in my classroom, one day walking in, it's incredibly humid, the next day, it's frigid cold, how in the winter, the heater only worked every other day. I literally would come in wearing these giant huggles, which, if you don't know, it's just a giant comfy sweater that just feels like a blanket, and this is just now 30, 35 million dollars, you know, in today's dollars, which I imagine will run over into the 40, 45 million dollar range eventually, that doesn't go to our schools and our facilities on the actual day-to-day of what we're supposed to do here, so I, I'm really... So I'm really wary of this, just me, on the capital impact of it. And then even then, too, it still feels really unsure whether or not the city's even willing to transfer property to us. They haven't said anything, at least I haven't heard it. So, I know, I know.
For the commission, this is just-
Right. But you know, it's like, it's one of these things to where it feels really, like Ms. Nguyen said, nebulous, feels like full of delays.
I appreciate what Ms. Nguyen said and what Mr. Vu said about our limited capital funds. And my feeling is that it would be very important to sell the Williger property for as much money as we could get in order to fund these renovations, because I think that, looking at the options we've been presented with today, that would be the most cost-effective option. But again, that would hinge on negotiations. So I think we had one caller on the line, is that correct, Mr. Foot? Yes. Oh, okay. And after the caller, we have two in-person speakers on this topic.
I'm sorry?
I said after your caller, we have two people who've signed up to speak on the topic as well.
Caller, please state your name. You have three minutes with the board.
Hi, yes, my name is Nina Davis, and I really wish y'all could be a part of, like, actually take a part of keeping the high school at football, at Citizen Field, because it all actually, the school board is a major use of that field. You have three high school teams that play football. You have the same high school also plays soccer there. So we all actually are a huge part of the people that use that field. And not only that, y'all, y'all have fifth grade field day there. So we are a huge, school board is a huge part of who uses the field. Have in our, also considering that Potwater uses the field on Saturday, can they chip in in order for the use of the field? And also to see that one option to move Eastside games to Hawthorne, Bu- uh, Bu- Hug games to Newberry, and G- Chest to L- that is a nonstarter, at least for the Eastside, because I love going to the games. Since the field is close to where I stay, I don't have anyone that plays for, I have my two daughters go to school. I go there for school spirit, but to go to the Hawthorne for a football game, that's a nonstarter for me. And what about all other people that don't have transportation? Are y'all gonna have buses to take the parents, the families to Hawthorne? That is a nonstarter. Y'all, y'all need to find some type of way to keep the football game at Citizen Field, because I am scared that they're gonna go deal regardless, and the school board, Alachia County School Board be, gonna be out. Something gonna be built at Citizen Field, and I hope we will be the one that take, uh, use that field for the benefit of the families. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I believe there are two in-person-
We have one more speaker, Carrie Parker Warren.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Carrie Parker Warren, and I just wanna call the attention to, the Citizen Field and that complex out there is an anchor in this community, and it needs to remain that on the east side of town. Now, if the city owns this property already, and you have made all of these grandiose plans as to what we are going to do on that property, why are we here? I know you want to have a partnership with the school board, but I don't see any way that you could give or sell any part of that complex to the school board. You have been working on it, you have plans for that, and we need to stick to the plan. If they want to come in and use the field for the schools after you finish with it, and they're gonna give some money, and they know how to work around that, you don't need to sell or give Citizen Field to anyone city. Keep it, do what you plan to do with it, and then if they want to rent it when you finish with it with their football game, fine, but that is part of the east side community, and we don't want to see it go anyplace else. Because when you keep that, it brings money and other opportunities to the east side of town. So citizens, don't sit up in here and let them get rid of Citizen's Field. The city owns it, so you need to keep it, develop it, and then ask them to come in and give you some money for using it.
All right. Are there any more comments from the board? Hearing none, all in favor of Ms. Sirdan's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three zero. I'm sorry, three one. With Mr. Vu and dissent. So moving on to the consent agenda, Dr. Patton.
Thank you again for being here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ward and-
Thank you.
Commissioner Chestnut, and City Manager Curry, and Mr. Parsons, and other staff members who were here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, on to the consent agenda, Dr. Patton.
Thank you. So the superintendent recommends that the school board approve the consent agenda as described.
Move with staff recommendation.
Ms. Sirdan moved to approve the consent agenda. Dr. McNeely, did you second? Dr. McNeely seconded. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda? Mr. Vu?
Just two things. I'll just start with going backwards here. Item nine, it's on improving student outcomes in, you know, mathematics grant. We're just, the grant is only for materials. And this is kind of, to me, just kind of like on the trend of what it's been like in Alachia County Public Schools, where we love to buy materials and things, but the actual implementation is always a lacking part. And I'm just, my question is, what will be different about this? How will we utilize these materials? What is that greater plan to implement them with instruction? And what do the logistics look like with these materials?
Ms. Roll.
Yes, so the grant, if we are, if we, when it's approved, because right now what we're waiting for is the approved list of materials that we could purchase from the state, these materials will be used to support our students that are below the 10th percentile, as determined by the FAST assessment. The grant could also be used to support with personnel as well. It will not be used for professional learning.
And so I'm, to kind of clarify, when we get grant applica-, when we get grant applications, the grants are limited in what we can spend them on, correct?
Absolutely.
So I'm assuming that this grant was specifically for the state-approved materials?
Forthcoming, and we, once that is given to us, we will be able to select from that list from the state.
Thank you, Ms. Roll. Are there any other questions? Did you have another thing on the consent agenda, Mr. Vu?
I mean, it's kind of just like, not really directly on the number six, but, you know, talking about the Sallyport upgrades for Hawthorne, and I know in general there's been a facilities, you know, study about the needs and facilities needs plan. I know Hawthorne, and I'm not know if it is, I assume, I would like to think it's really high priority on the list, because of just all the things, I don't have to go over them, but all the issues that have happened with the facility and how, to me, it needs to be a priority. That's all.
All right. Are there any, did you have something, Dr. Patton?
The priority of Hawthorne's Sallyport entrance. Okay, sorry.
Ms. Nguyen is coming.
I apologize, I was looking at some facility data. Can you repeat your question? I apologize.
Just, I know you're still going through your facilities update and the needs, some assessment for all of our facilities, and I know that's been a long process, and I just see Hawthorne on here for the Sallyport, which is, you know, security measures we're all doing. My comment was just on that. I know we're gonna get something at some point. I just want to emphasize that I really hope Hawthorne is high on that priority list, just considering the state of the facility and all the issues that we've all seen and heard about the last five years. That's all. Just a comment, and I don't need a response.
It's a positive comment, is how I take it. He's basic-
I'm just hoping it is, because I know you're doing, I know you're doing a lot of hard work, and there's a lot on your plate. That was just me hoping it's high on the priority list.
So appreciating that a school that's had some issues, that we're taking care of that issue.
And that is something that is on Mr. Sanders' radar, and I know Assistant Superintendent Eunice's radar, and that, all of that information for all of our schools is gonna be captured in the facility condition assessment. I don't know, Ms. Eunice, if you wanna speak to that as well? But yeah, we're doing our due diligence. The Lofton and Hawthorne schools do have grant funds for some of the security work that's being done there, not all of it, but some of it. And so that's why there's a timeline to expend those funds, and it's something that Chief Pelton has deemed, you know, single-point entry to all of our campuses is a priority.
All right, I just thank you and appreciate all your hard work and everything. Y'all do great stuff, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Moving on to action item one, employee case 2024-25-903605. Ms. Terry.
The superintendent recommends that the school board terminate the employee effective March 13th, 2025.
Move with staff recommendation.
Motion by Ms. Sirdan, is there a second? Second by Mr. Vu. We're going to forego in discussion on this item for the employee's privacy. All those in favor of termination? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Action item number two, the K-12 budget amendment. Ms. Black.
I got it on. The proposed amendments to the IDEA K-12 entitlement grant is an adjustment to the total funds available, and that's based on the approved roll forward and allocation adjustments from Florida Department of Education. The superintendent recommends approval of the amendment as presented.
Moved by Dr. McNeely.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sirdan. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you. I don't have a comment or a question for Ms. Black, but I do just want to bring to Ms. Green's attention, I asked her to change this agenda item in Board Doc so that it says the IDEA grant, it doesn't just say K-12 budget amendment, because that is a little bit, it's not clear as to what this is. It's a title grant, and it should say that. We're searching, actually, both items. I asked her to make that change.
That's valuable feedback, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Is there any citizen input on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And item number three, Ms. Black with the pre-K IDEA budget amendment.
Yes, it is, and that's adjustment, again, based on available funds that were from the approved roll forward and adjustments to the allocations. So the superintendent recommends approval of the IDEA pre-K entitlement grant as presented amendments.
Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Vu, seconded by Dr. McNeely. Is there any discussion from the board? Any citizen input? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And now on to the discussion of the Newbury Charter conversion, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By way of background, on November 26th, 2024, the Newbury Community School submitted its application to the Charter School Review Commission. In December, on behalf of the district, a response was submitted explaining that, first of all, the charter vote had failed, and secondly, pointing out deficiencies in the application, both of which would be reasons for the Charter School Review Commission to not approve the application. Nevertheless, on February 26th, 2025, the Charter School Review Commission voted to approve the application, and there is now a deadline approaching to consider an appeal to the State Board of Education, as well as presenting a proposed contract in relation to the Charter Review, Charter School Review Commission's decision submitting a proposed contract to the Newbury Community School. So at this time, I think it would be appropriate for the board to discuss direction it might wanna give the superintendent to take in relation to this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. And we do have eight citizens who are signed up to speak on this topic. If you would like to speak on this topic and didn't sign up, please see Ms. Johnson, and she will be calling those who have signed up to speak.
Our first three speakers are Jessica Baker, Erin Taylor, and Annie Moscato.
One moment, before you all come up, I did not follow our order. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so in line with what our attorney just said, I do believe that the vote failed and all of that stuff, so I move that we direct the superintendent, authorize the superintendent and legal counsel to file an appeal with the Florida Department of Education regarding the, challenging the approval of the Newbury Charter School, and to explore all legal, available legal actions to that approval by the Charter School Review Committee.
Ms. Sirdan has made a motion, Mr. Vu has seconded it. Ms. Green, do you need that motion repeated to record it?
Move that we authorize Superintendent Patton and legal counsel to file an appeal with, I'm gonna, I said FDOE, but I think it should be whatever the appropriate agency is that you all-
State Board of Education.
Okay, the State Board of Education regarding the approval of the Newbury Charter School application, and to explore all available legal actions to challenge this approval.
Okay, now that we have a motion and a second, I'm going to open public comment.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Annie Moscato. When the Education First Newbury Group first called for a vote to convert Newbury Elementary School, the district fulfilled their legal obligation to hold the vote, and then announced that vote as a fail. You also fulfilled your obligation to post that the vote failed publicly, as was legally required of you. And in the case that a group calls for such a vote, if they don't agree with the formal declaration of the outcome, then there's an appeals process to legally contest the results. So I just wanted to be sure that everyone in the community understood that the Education First Newbury Group never contested the results, which suggests that they accepted the vote as a failure. Despite this, as Mr. Delaney has pointed out, they submitted the application to convert Newbury Elementary School to a conversion charter school through the newly established- state Charter Review Commission. The district obviously then submitted that the vote did not pass, making them ineligible. The review commission stated that it was not within their purview to determine the eligibility of an application, because they cannot interpret statutes. So I think there's a lot of misconceptions that they reviewed it and said the vote passed, when in reality, they reviewed it and said as an application, they were accepting it, but they could not speak to, to what the vote was. So as a sponsor, should the vote have passed, then obviously you would now be required to enter into a charter agreement to convert Newberry Elementary School to a charter school. However, because it failed, as you have repeatedly stated, then it would not be legally appropriate to enter into such an agreement. So as a taxpayer and a parent in Alachua County who has an interest in our public schools, I would ask you to not proceed with entering into such an agreement, at a minimum until you have formal communication from Florida Department of Education or the State Board of Education, declaring that the vote passed, and a explanation of how they are legally drawing that conclusion. So I appreciate the motion to move forward with exploring the options for appealing that decision, and at a minimum, if you can't do that, that I would ask that everyone votes to table the discussion until you have more information regarding how this is even legal for the district to proceed in this agreement at this time. And thank you very much for your time.
I'm considerably shorter than Dr. Moscato, apparently. Hello, board, chair, superintendent, my name is Jessica Rosinski Baker. I am going to hopefully keep my comment brief. I made my points pretty clear in an email I submitted to you all in December with a 240-page attachment. I am here to support the motion that Ms. Sirdan just made. I would like to remind you all, as it regards the Florida Administrative Code, that the only language changed in that was the 50% part, not the independent arbitrator, not who gets to have the vote or count the vote, and that the vote was tallied. The independent arbitrator posted the final tallies, and it was in line with the Florida Administrative Code at the time. I'd also like to remind you that sometimes we have to do the hard thing, and it's the right thing in order to make sure that our public schools stay public. I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm so nervous. Newberry Elementary is the only elementary school out there for many of these students, and it would be a very long bus ride for most of the students to go to another school. I know lawsuits are expensive, I know money is tight, and I know the money gets tighter every year, but I feel that if we don't fight this, that the charter situation out there will keep getting more and more money out of the school board and district than it has right now. Thank you.
Raise this back up. Hi, I'm Erin Taylor. I'm one of the few citizens who were able to vote in the commission, in the conversion ballot initiative. I'm a parent. I voted against it. It's clear now, the majority of our community is not in favor of the converting our public school to a charter school, because we value our public education system, and as Jessica said, it is the only elementary school in that area. It's my understanding that since a conversion application has been approved, the next steps is for the district to offer the initial charter contract. However, since the vote failed, which was determined by the district, as y'all have jurisdiction over the vote, an application should have never been submitted and considered in the first place. With that being said, it doesn't make sense to me for the district to comply with the next steps. It's also my understanding that the results were never formally disputed, as is required within 30 days of the vote, so the DOE has never weighed in on the issue. Wouldn't it make sense to ask clarification from them before doing anything? Therefore, I ask that the board request clarification from the Department of Education on the vote, table any decisions on next steps until at least the next school board meeting. Newberry was a test case. We are living in a time where those in power are disregarding laws and rules and doing what they want regardless. That includes dismantling our public education as we know it. If we don't fight this, we might as well say goodbye to our public schools. Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Brandy Oldman, Kelsey Hershey, and Inez Wilburn.
Good evening, board. I'm Brandy Oldman. I am SAC member at NES, Newberry Elementary School, I'm a DAC member. I'm also a parent of four, three of which that go to Newberry Elementary. I obviously voted against this measure, because it does not, it's not what's best for every student. 149 people voted for this, and it failed. Let's make that clear, it failed. But y'all took an oath to do what's right by every child for public education, and while they call it a public charter school, it's only that way because they get public funding. They can pick and choose as, however they want, and we know that they are not equipped to handle special needs children like traditional public schools, and when those children have to go somewhere else, y'all are gonna be the ones on the hook for the bill to bus them there. For example, my child, hypoglycemic, 30 minutes on a bus, he could die, like a diabetic coma, and he won't be going to the Newberry Charter, because I've been way too loud to these folks. So I would like for y'all to do everything in your power to fight this. This is, when good people don't fight things, evil triumphs, and I'm not, I'm not okay with that, and I think above a football field, we should spend money on this, and please do the right thing, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, I'm Kelly Hershey. I did not have a vote in the conversion charter, but I am affected by it. There's a lot of kids that are affected by it, and that's what I'm here for, is the kids. That's what y'all are here for, the kids. Like she said, y'all took an oath. Y'all's oath was because you believed in your school board system. You believed in public schools, you believed in our kids. Y'all need to stand 10 toes in, and y'all need to fight this battle, not later, now. Y'all need to stand up and say, no, enough is enough, back down, you lost. This vote failed, period. We are not gonna allow you to take over and throw your little hissy fit because you lost the race, honey. Everybody does not get a trophy here. That's what it's, that's what it's about, you know, and it's power. They have power, it's not what you know, it's who you know, and you guys can all try and stop it. So the motion that was brought in, y'all need to definitely stand your ground and keep your school for our kids, for the future, and that's it. Just make sure you do not allow these people to hostilely take over what is everybody's, what is our kids', the future. Don't let them take it. 10 toes in, y'all. Stand your ground.
Good evening. My name is Inez Wilburn, and I live and work in Newberry, Florida. I'm here tonight to express my opposition to the conversion of Newberry Elementary School into a charter school. I've lived in Newberry since 2008, and have had children in attendance at all three schools. Currently, I have a student at Newberry High School. Newberry's amazing public schools is exactly why I moved there to begin with, and now a small group of individuals has chosen to take it into their own hands to convert our wonderful elementary school to a charter school. From the very beginning of this proposition, the entire process has been tainted. The entire city was deceived from the outset by being told it was about providing choice, when in reality, it was taking away choice. That a vote would be held, and that the parents and teachers would be the deciding factors in this, while omitting the entire city that would be affected in the long term due to the downstream economic effects. Charter conversion is utilized for underperforming schools or schools that have low enrollment. NES is neither of those things. NES is an A school that is overcapacity. We, the people, were told the vote would have to be a majority vote, and at every meeting held preceding the vote, we were shown slides that said 50% plus one is a majority vote. Using that rubric, the vote failed at every school. There is a process for contesting the vote that the charter people did not follow. The figurehead of this movement is now sitting in jail, accused of some pretty heinous behavior involving a minor. Decisions including additional funding and appointment of board members have not had any public discussion or input. It's clear that the majority of this entire initiative was executed in the shadows and not in the sunshine, and in all actuality, this is actually a thinly veiled municipal charter, using conversion charter as the mechanism for takeover. But I digress, I would like to point out the main reason why I'm here tonight. I'm here to implore you not to sponsor this conversion due to the fact that there is no clarity from Florida Department of Education regarding the outcome of the vote, not to mention that it was a dangerous precedent for the hostile taking over.
Thank you.
Well-performing public schools, and I'm.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Travis Adair, Andrew Kaplan, and Gina Rivera.
Good evening, board. My name is Travis Adair. I'm a citizen of Newberry. I'm sure many of you know where I stand on this issue. If you don't, I'm sure I should clear it up. I'm here to remind this board in public that the vote failed in Newberry Elementary and failed to pass. To date, only one government agency has made a ruling on that vote, and that is this district, as the results have hung up in Newberry Elementary School for over a year, unchallenged, saying the vote has failed. Despite this, the Charter Board has continued forward, and recently, the Charter Review Board rubber-stamped their application. That board also specifically did not rule on whether the vote passed or not, since they do not have the authority to do so. The Florida Department of Education, or Board of Education, is who should be providing some clarity, and I urge you to not take what should be, what they want you to do as the next steps, which is to begin to come up with an agreement or a contract with this charter. You cannot do this, because you currently have ruled that they do not have a successful vote. If you're worried about impending litigation and the costs associated, I completely understand that. The cost of not protecting our institutions is the complete destruction of those institutions. Also, we've seen their budget, I wouldn't worry about it too much. If you look at it wrong, it'll crumble into bankruptcy. Anyway, overruling a democratic process to enforce an agenda is authoritarian fascism. This isn't theoretical. The fascism is here, and it is looking you in the face. Your leadership and your oaths are currently being tested, and we, the people, are watching, so please do the right thing, refuse to comply, and do not allow these people to steal our public institutions. Thank you.
Hello, hello? I'm in the wrong boardroom. Just keep it, keep it brief. As a parent who voted in that election, as a parent who had their child directly affected by this whole process, I just want to remind everyone that only 149 parents voted to take the school away. 20, was it 22 teachers voted in support, 22 voted against. To discredit that, when we were all told the rules that it had to be 50% plus one from the entire process, to suddenly change that, it just kind of feels like we never had a choice. Borderline voter suppression. That's all.
Hello again, Gina Rivera, one more time. I'm not a citizen of Newberry, but I am a teacher in Alachua County, a public school teacher proudly. A lot of people don't understand the effect of charter schools. They are painted as this Magic Kingdom Disney dream of a perfect school that will suddenly cater to all the parents' needs, and your voice will be heard, yada, yada, yada. But what people don't see is all the money being siphoned out of public education, and we are seeing it on the news, how the impending doom heading towards the Department of, federal Department of Education is coming. What we are seeing is a direct attack on public education, and the people that will be hurt the most are not the privileged, but the underserved, the unprivileged. Those are the kids that are gonna suffer, the kids with IEPs, kids with 504s, kids that have severe needs that are not going to be served in a charter school, because we can say, oh, no, thank you, that is not the child that we can serve here, so sorry. And that is a door closed. Right now, in my classroom, I'm teaching about the Civil Rights Movement, we've been learning so many things, and it's incredible to see a fourth grader understand the importance of your rights, and the importance that everybody should be treated fairly. So I hope that we can continue public education so that we don't lose sight of the real goal, which is that everybody needs and has the right to a free and public education, so agreeing to suddenly turn a school into a charter school, or even entertain the idea after this was definitely voted in the negative, is, is to, to give more cotton fodder to a group of people that their only purpose is to destroy free and public education. So we need to keep the goal in mind, which is to serve every student, every single student, regardless of where they come from. Thank you.
Mr. Fu, do you have callers?
Caller, please state your name, you have two minutes with the board.
Hi, my name is Tulsa Barsha, and I'm calling as a parent that's advocating for the rest of the kids that are going to Newberry. That is going to be the most horrid, ridiculous thing ever, because like was stated, my child couldn't handle a blood sugar drop on a 20-minute bus ride. I can't imagine the kids from here having to go to Newberry, because Newberry doesn't want them, because they have IEPs, 504. I'm appalled. And then to, I'm shaking as I say this, because the, the human that stated that he wants to do this, straight-up bullied and harassed. Individual parents online and has done that, called students' names or children's names. My kid doesn't go to Newberry, but they were calling my kid names. As I stated, that my kid could act better, my kid doesn't disrupt classes, my kid, you can ask any of my kids' teachers, even though she's special needs and has an IEP, she helps out the teachers, she helps out in the classrooms when kids are having issues understanding the word, and she understands it, she helps out. And how is he gonna say, "A special needs kid just disrupts"? Where, where is your logic, sir? And he calls me names and, and yells at me, and how is that, how can he run a charter school? How are we allowing this? So thank you, I appreciate you guys for saying they're all gonna stand up to him.
Mr. Vu? I think, oh, Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and when I made my motion, I actually failed to kind of fill you guys in on that I did attend the meeting in Orlando on the 26th, and myself, and there was an attorney, Ms. Amy, we got the Amy from Sniffing the Spellman, I can't think of her last name. But I just really want to just, actually, Dr. Patton, did we, the district or staff, Ms., person in our school choice office, just her name just left, Stanford?
Center.
Did she receive a call to do an interview about our application?
Not at all, not to any of our knowledge.
So.
Not the application nor the letter that you all sent from the attorneys.
So nothing, ma'am. So just kind of the lay of the land for you guys, so you know what happened when we were, when I was in Orlando. I was initially told I would have, myself and Amy would have, the state would get five minutes, Newberry Charter folks would get five minutes, and we would have an unlimited amount of time to discuss the application. I stepped out to take a call from Dr. Patton, and I went back in, and then they told me we had. a conversion, and that they've spent an entire, a lot of money in city time, Newberry time, doing this. And that school districts are organized on the county concept by the state constitution. And we participate in Florida Education Finance Program. That's how schools are funded, right? And so the citizens of Newberry are going to be additionally burdened by this whole process because in the application, their application, as well as in the meeting, they said that the city of Newberry would be the financial backstop for this thing, right? So the way that the city raises their revenue is through mileage rate and fees, right? And so what I can, in my mind, envision happening is the citizens of Newberry, and even their governmental officials are going to be saying they don't want to pay the school the tax because they have their school out there in their community. But as I tried to drive home, the required local effort, we don't have a choice about assessing that because in order to get state money, we have to do that. And that area, our county, is encompassed by that. So, you know, for me, I think it's, we haven't got notification of that, and we, I don't think we, that this, why they consider the thing, so I really do hope that you guys will support the motion. We filed the appeal, and I am ready for doing a whole lot more than that, but for us to relate to concern that, I'm not convinced that the vote would pass again, and they don't, they didn't have this huge mandate that they're claiming that they had. 149 families voted for that, and it was split. The teacher was, vote was a tie, and nowhere else in any other election do we know that that goes. So I just think we just have to fight the process and not just comply. And my motto, as you all know, when I was president of our state association, was to do what is good and right for every student. And that's what I have always made my decisions on, is to try to do, to make the best decision that I could to benefit the most students that I could. And I think keeping the school under the district control is the best path for us. Thank you.
Mr. Vu.
I agree with everything that Surtin said. I won't belabor the points on the fact that, yeah, they lost the vote, it was never contested, and no one's ever ruled otherwise with any authority that has, you know, to say otherwise. Even the Florida's Attorney General refused to comment and rule on this if that tells you anything. So to me, we've lost the vote. I agree with Ms. Surtin's motion. I'm definitely going to vote for it. But I also just want to talk about why I'm also going to vote no. So aside from the fact that, you know, the joke I make when I'm playing board games with folks, and I totally stole it from a friend of mine, but it's, "The rules are how I have fun." These people did not follow the rules in any step of the way. Their whole campaign started with a lie. They said they were a grassroots effort, and then I don't know how a grassroots effort fines $120,000 to do this. I don't know how a grassroots effort is organized by a mayor utilizing city staff to organize this, research it, and do it. I don't know how a grassroots effort recruits a high-level political consultant who works in national politics to do this. And let's talk about that high-level consultant for a little bit, Joel Serby, who's currently in jail right now, awaiting charges and a trial for heinous crimes against children. Let's think about that for a second, and how this group embraced this man and defended him. And even after he was arrested, their first reaction was this was a conspiracy, not condemning him. The mayor said nothing for over a week, and then used the fact that he was out of the country as an excuse, as if somehow he didn't know. Again, shirking his duty to his town and the community at large, and to the very kids he's claiming he's doing this for. So all those lies, right? And then there was the whole lie that this is going to work and be better. Even their own budget, like some of you all pointed out, shows that Newberry Elementary School on its own cannot financially support itself. And this is also evident, and that the city of Newberry had to take a $2 million loan that they're underwriting to support this school, again, telling everybody, "This is not financially feasible." And so to me, they're going to do everything they can to put window dressing on a pig, but that's what this is. This whole plan of theirs is just terrible. It might as well be thrown in the mud. But now I'm just getting a little bit into invective, and maybe I don't need to do that. But, you know, to me, it's really clear what's happening. It's really clear that this is part of some greater movement. This isn't isolated. This wasn't grassroots. You don't get the state approving something like this unless they were already going to do so. You don't get $120,000 in case you have big, financially connected backers. You don't get a high-level political consultant who was clearly morally terrible and willing to do morally terrible things to do this again unless you have big backing. And so to me, everything about this is part of something bigger. I'm going to, again, vote to oppose the conversion vote. I'm going to vote for Ms. Surtin's motion just for that very reason, because we can't sit idly by and do it. The school cannot support itself, and we have to do everything we can to make sure that we keep it.
I, too, support Ms. Surtin's motion to file an appeal. I believe that we need to ask the Board of Education to weigh in here, and if they refuse to weigh in, or they weigh in in a way that violates their own rules that were in place at the time, I want to see that in writing. I want them on the record saying that that is what they're doing. I do have a question for Mr. Delaney. What happens to the timeline for, because I know we have 30 days, so what happens once we submit that appeal? Does the timeline reset? Does it pause? Or are we still within that timeline?
The rules are not clear on that, and we actually received a letter about 10 minutes before this meeting started this evening, which I haven't had a chance to study thoroughly, that might affect when the starting date for that timeline is. The question that we're having is, was it when the commission announced its decision at the meeting back in February? Or is it the date of the written decision, which was a letter dated today that we received right before today's meeting? So we need to study that issue, try to get some clarification on that.
Because in that statute, it says a written response, and then underneath that, it says 30 days. So there's an implication. Is that 30 days from the written letter, which was 10 minutes before the board meeting? Or is it from two weeks ago?
And then, and then I'm curious, you know, if we issue this appeal and we lose the appeal, and we have not met that 30-day requirement, once we clarify what it is, what are the consequences of that?
Remember, he, and he'll remind you, there is no appeal. We don't have an ability to appeal it. The only appeal can be an appeal, if the answer was no, then Newberry could appeal. So let me, let Mr. Delaney take it over.
The statute and the rules implementing the statute are not written to create a level playing field. The rules in the statute reflect only if the applicant, if the charter conversion school gets turned down by the Charter Review Commission. There is a pathway forward in the rules for those folks to take an appeal. It's silent as to whether the district has the option of taking an appeal. We want to push this issue as far as we can by going ahead and citing those rules in that statute and submitting an appeal to the State Board of Education.
So I guess that clarifies what Dr. Patton said, that the state board is unclear, there's no, they have not specified an appeal process for us. We're going to go ahead and try to submit one anyway if this motion passes. But that doesn't answer my question of what are our obligations for that contract in the meantime, and what are the consequences if we don't begin the negotiation process within the 30 days?
I'm speculating a little bit because, you know, I don't, I represent the folks here and this board. What actions the Department of Education might take, I would have to guess, but one of them might be that they impose a contract, or they approve whatever terms that the Newberry applicant is requesting. So we are going to work to avoid that as an outcome.
So I guess my question is, is it possible for our staff to work on a contract while we file the appeal in the event that our appeal is turned down, or we don't get an answer from the state within the 30 days?
Yes, ma'am, and that work has already begun.
Okay.
To be clear for us is what, not to be clear, but to state what I think we think we know we're doing, is it's, again, ambivalent for a reason, it sometimes seems, because there are plenty of rules that are very crystal clear. This is definitely not. So our current plan is to do similarly to what was done in December, when we had a letter, if you remember, you guys had the board directed, and they sent a letter about two weeks ahead of when our objections needed to go in. So we sent that letter, we did not hear anything back. So we did send in our pages full of concerns about the application. Just because of the concern with no response back, then are they going to say, "Well, we're not taking it. You didn't give it to us within the 30 days." So I do think that, I think what we're, what we see, unless we can find out differently, that whatever you guys decide to do, we'll still work to move ahead with putting in a proposed contract, and by that 30 days, so that, who knows, like Mr. Delaney said, they don't come back and say, "Okay, well then, Newberry can write the contract."
Yeah, because, I mean, to me, that would be a worst-case scenario, that we lose our appeal and Newberry gets their contract as they want it enforced, when that contract may not include things that are necessary for kids, or may include things that are an undue burden on the district.
So I think, would you agree, Mr. Delaney, that's the direction staff should take?
Yes, we're going to oppose...
And we are in the middle of working on it. We just spent, again, today, more time.
Thank you. That clarifies things for me. Thank you.
We're working to give the district as many options as possible.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
So just, because it's obviously a very hot topic, I think what I'm hearing is that we're going to write, or you're going to put an appeal into the State Board of it and not worry about litigation locally.
I think Ms. Surtin's motion focuses on the appeal. If there are other legal or litigation actions, I think we would be authorized if we thought that we could recommend...
Do something with it. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no more comments or questions, all those in favor of moving forward with the appeal. Aye. Motion carries 4-0. All right. Let's take a very brief, like, three-minute restroom break, because I want to make sure all the board members hear all the citizen input. Okay, I am going to call this meeting back to order. I'm going to give the, okay, the booth's got us back on. Before we go to citizen input, I want to call on our student representative, Ms. Charity Camps, so that if she needs to get home and do her schoolwork and get ready for the next day, she can do that.
Good evening. So last month, the Amplified Student Voice Coalition surveyed high school students to identify topics that they care about. And the survey asked students three questions, and the three questions were, "What are some positive things that happened at your school? What are some things you would like to see improved at your school? And what are the two most important topics you feel would improve your high school experience?" And thank you so very much to the assistant principals who have helped this become possible. 136 students responded within one week, which is very good. And one of the main themes was college and career planning, which is very helpful for those students who were continuing in junior and senior year. Amplified students are continuing to share surveys with our peers... Amplified students are continuing to share surveys with our peers during lunches and look forward to sharing results with you in the future. And one of our goals is to support the fourth annual college bootcamp experience for rising juniors and seniors at Santa Fe College over the summer, June 2025, which is created based on student B, feedback from student government groups. Please let me know if there's anything that the board would like me to share with our, my amplified peers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Charity. That was very valuable information so that we know what we're doing well and where to continue to focus our, our efforts, especially with, it sounds like, school counselors in our high schools. Thank you. And now we're moving on to citizen input. Oh, anything, Mr. Vu?
I just wanted to thank you for your comments as well. And one thing you did mention was 136, you know, students responded. But you know, you're there with your peers way more connected than we are. I always wonder too, the other side of that data is the students who didn't respond. And you just, what are you, what's your sense of that of, you know, why they wouldn't respond? Or, you know, what would make them not want to do that?
I feel it could be many aspects. It could maybe be like embarrassment, nervousness. It could be not really caring about what the school does, just going to school and coming home. I personally didn't have many encounters with those students and I did not attend the last meeting that Amplified had. But I would say those aspects would come into play with students who did not respond. It could also be students who aren't at school. Maybe it could be the Amplified students who are asking this question to people who are, who they're more comfortable with and who they think could get, they could get a response out of.
All right, awesome, thank you so much.
All right, moving on to citizen input, Ms. Johnson.
Our first three speakers are Marilyn Wendy, Leanne Roan, and Zoe Lackey.
My name is Marilyn Wendy. I stand before you today as an educator and I'm absolutely committed to the well-being and rights of our students, staff, and faculty. Recent developments have raised significant concerns that we must address collectively and urgently. On February 10th, Alachua County Public Schools issued a memo outlining protocols for interactions with ICE in schools. It says ICE can take children without parent consent or a warrant, which is meant to disenfranchise and disempower. It says to our Gainesville community that the Alachua County School Board is committed to implementing racist policies here that specifically tear apart families. This entire system is failing us as workers and students and community members, and now our school board is complicit. This directive has understandably left many educators frightened and uncertain about their roles and responsibilities in such scenarios. They are entrusted with the safety and education of our students, yet they find themselves grappling with how to protect their rights amidst these ambiguous guidelines. All the while, they are overworked and they are underpaid. This memo has also instilled a climate of fear among our students, undermining the safe and nurturing environment essential for effective learning. The presence of ICE agents in educational settings has been linked to increased anxiety, absenteeism, and disengagement among students, particularly for those in immigrant communities. This fear disrupts their academic performance and overall well-being. It underscores the urgent need for the district to enhance its support for education by providing virtual and multilingual learning opportunities. We demand ICE out of our schools, we demand teachers are respected, and we demand students are protected in our school settings.
Good evening, my name is Zoe Lackey. I was a classroom teacher at Metcalf Elementary, hoping to get back in the classroom after I have my son in 2026. As both a parent of children and a professional educator, I am deeply concerned about the district's nebulous collaboration with ICE as well as law enforcement acting on their behalf. I am worried about students' exposure to extreme stress and trauma regarding possible law enforcement interactions, their peers being taken away, or family members detained. This exposure to trauma will have negative impacts on student outcomes. In a district already failing to close the achievement gap between white and minority students, the district must release a plan to address this. It is only negligent not to, as we have seen data from the CDC that traumatized students are two and a half times more likely to fail a grade. Where is the equity? Furthermore, our district must share their plan to address the incoming decline in class attendance and school graduation rates due to the fear and trauma keeping our children from academic success. How do we show our community that we invest in the success of each student in our, in our county if ICE is allowed to terrorize our campuses? As a parent, it is unacceptable that no information for students and families has been released when staff received the memo weeks ago. ICE in schools will destroy families. Though our district claims to empower families, when will this announcement be made to families and the public? As a former and hopefully future staff member, I am concerned about both the lack of training teachers have and the excessive amount of additional work placed on teachers. The memo sent to teachers is extremely vague and there is no clear direction provided for certain scenarios. Teachers are frightened and concerned that this is further disrespect to their profession. When will teachers and staff receive additional training? Additionally, teachers are worried about potential liability and repercussions for violations. Thanks.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Leanne Roan, and I'm one of the teacher, one of the district's four teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing. First, I have to say I'm shocked to hear any discussion about spending millions of dollars on football stadiums at a time when this district has been unable to bring a salary proposal to the table due to budgetary limitations after over a year of negotiations for the school year that's almost over. Last time I was here, I shared a list of items that I could pay for with my step increase this year of $1.59, $1.59 per pay period. I didn't quite finish my list, but I have only two more items to share with you that I can pay for with that $1.59 per pay period. Four and a half days of my husband's Parkinson's medications, or six hours of his monthly Medicare premium. I never thought that I would be thankful that he's able to be on Medicare due to his disability for $175 a month and not on the district plan for $422 a pay period. I never dreamed that he would be diagnosed with Parkinson's at age 42, nor that I would be, as a public school teacher, the primary breadwinner in my household because of that Teachers work many extra hours for free so that we can provide the instruction that our students deserve. Classrooms don't come beautifully decorated. Teachers spend many dollars out of our own pockets to help us provide the instructional environment that our students deserve. Within 24 hours of volunteering to change roles, returning to the classroom after serving as an itinerant teacher for eight years, my step increase of $1.59 per pay period was spent on items that I needed to do so. But my out-of-pocket costs didn't stop there. Please, if you're truly committed to the success of every student, please make this a priority.
Our next three speakers are Sanibel Wajid, John Booth, and Jessica Roxstein.
Good evening, my name is Sanibel Wajid, and I'm a senior at Eastside High School and the leader of the Period Box Initiative that for two years provided free period products in all women restrooms at Eastside High School. Our drive has recently been banned without informing us a direct reason. Many students in Eastside do not have the transportation options, nor the money to buy period products because they're quite expensive. The Period Box Initiative was started because I refuse to let my classmates, my friends, and myself suffer in shame. Our effort has been silenced, not because it failed, but because the district has decided that providing students with access to something as basic as period products is controversial. They say we are violating the law, but we are within the guidelines of Florida law, HB 389 and Florida statute, section 1,006.064 that encourages schools and school districts to provide free period products in their schools. We were doing exactly what the law set out to accomplish, ensuring that students are supported, not shamed. But the district continues to speak in vague fearful rhetoric while stripping away a program that has served a clear and urgent need. As a school district, you have a responsibility, not to miss, not to bureaucratic caution, but to your students, to the young people who rely on your leadership and trust you to act in our best interest. The period drive is about basic human dignity. We want to have a clear reason why our advocacy is being met with disciplinary suspicions and pressures. And our pivotal initiative of our school is being taken away after years of hard work. The Gainesville City Government has stocked 85% public restrooms with free period products because they realize that this is a public health issue, but in our school, the same cannot be said. We are fighting tooth and nail for basic dignity. Please let us continue this pivotal program because period products are not controversial, they're an essential need. Thank you.
Just one moment, Ms. Surtin, you had a question?
Yeah, so I think, as I've learned, there, there's a little bit of a conflict here in that these young women have, they've actually not been in the meeting, the principal's been in a meeting, the district, so we're gonna, we talked with them that we're gonna get everybody together in the same room so they can, they who have started this here directly, not via what the concerns are.
Okay, and would you please let the board know, cause I actually.
Absolutely.
When I, when she started speaking, if you'd let me know that I was actually, it was on my list to get with you on Monday about because you hadn't responded to me.
And I had brought that to our meeting on Monday as well, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed this, it was the first time hearing of it, but I'd also like an update because you know, what I was hearing from our speaker here, to me, he was really disturbing to me, I don't really understand what's going on. Yeah, stop there.
Well, the, the main concern to me is just that the, the people that have had the issue haven't been in the meeting and been told, there was a miss of a meeting and then district staff and then the principal, but the main people have been left out of a direct conversation.
I'm just curious though, it's like.
As I understand it, so.
Did this come from the schools independently of the district, this decision that now we're sitting here talking about?
No, I, I think I understand it that the, when it came to the district, that the district interpreted the law a little bit differently. There was a survey to parents, there's some, it's a little bit multiple thing. My concern too though is that these are seniors, so one way or the other, we want to be sure that they know the direct resolution because they're graduating in just a couple of months. These were kids that advocated and sometimes we're right, sometimes we're not, but we want to just make sure that no matter what, that these people that have taken the time, they hear directly, not via circles.
Well, the concern that I have, I'm just gonna tell you, the email is a threat of disciplinary action. That, that really bothered me, that's why I forwarded to you. And especially, and it, and it is a state statute, so I, and I think I even sent it in the email to you, I had, um, the, the threat. I, I guess maybe with, with our administrators, if we could really, um, I mean, you, you talk about like us coaching up everybody, but I think really coaching up people to know how that we handle citizens when, when parents, when they come to our schools as well as students, because we gotta provide good customer service, we want to keep our students, we don't want people getting hacked on with us and leaving the way they did from.
About it, so they, yeah, they missed the meeting, so they're, it's not the usual way something happens, so I'm gonna jump in here and we'll get this moving.
Just on behalf of this board member, hearing this now too for the first time, that there was a threat of disciplinary action. Yeah, I'm just gonna speak for myself, I can't speak for the whole board, obviously, I can't speak for the school district, but this board member finds that very disturbing. So again, thank you for coming to speak and bringing this to our attention.
Okay, back to citizen input, I'm sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Jessica Roxstein, I'm a public school teacher at Hawthorne, I'm also a parent of two kids that are currently in the public school system here. I'm gonna try to speak quickly on two different things. One is the issue of ICE coming into schools. Ms. Surtin said earlier, I actually wrote this down. I want to do what is good and right for every student. And what I would like to say to you now is that the district is not doing that, you are failing. The language in your staff memo requesting, instead of requiring proper procedures and documents is not acceptable. What I would like is that the school board request their staff compile information on what other Florida districts are doing to protect students and present their findings to the board and the attorneys so that you can consider what your options are. We understand that you are within some constraints. Just for example, I'm gonna be fast, Polk County is requiring judicial warrants, which is typical to go into private areas of school, according to them, and I can forward you an article this all came from, it's from WUSF in Tampa. Anything has to be reviewed by legal counsel before staff has given direction on releasing a student. Hernando County is requiring that ICE must show valid ID and by, be verified by some kind of true state visitor, their safety system before entering. So I don't know why Alachua County Schools is willing to let ICE come in without warrants, without showing ID and remove children. It's appalling. In my last 20 seconds, I'll say, um, I'm tired of telling my kids we can't afford to get the groceries they want. You want to spend how many, I'm all for football stadiums, I'm from a football school, okay? We won the state championship with a leaking roof on our gym, okay? You have money for football and not to pay your teachers? This is why your staff is on its way out. I hope you all get it together.
Yeah, I, can I, Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
So I normally, when I was hoping I, I'm, just wait to say this at the end, and I normally say this every time it comes up with this, but the Florida Education Finance Program is how schools are funded. And there are several different pots of money that we have, but the funding that we have, that is available to school districts is determined in Tallahassee. I require local effort as well as the match based on our student enrollment coming from Tallahassee. That is, those are the funds that can be used for operations and salaries. So the funding that we would use to repair roofs, athletics and things of that is, is capital. There are two sources for capital, we have the voter approved half cent sales tax that we all pay, and that's used for renovations, you know, expanding capacity, things of that nature. And then our local tax money, the 1.5 capital mill is what could be used for athletics, can be used to fix ACs and roofs and things of that nature. And there was an extensive backlog of capital improvement needs, roofs, AC, expansion of capacity, and that's the reason we went to the voters in 2018 to ask for them to approve the half cent sales tax to provide us an additional funding stream to be able to do that. I've also said, and really encouraged my colleagues over the years that I've been on the board to really maintain and to be true to the mission of what we told the citizens, or what the board at that time and district staff told citizens when they asked them to vote for the tax and what it would be used for. Since that time, a lot has changed. We had COVID and during that time, the prices went up and those funds, you heard Ms. Wendy say that we have to be cautious about that. There's work need to be done at Hawthorne, at their, at the school as well as the stadium. So I don't want anyone to think that because we had the discussion about a transaction with the city, that those are funds that could be used for staff raises because they can. And the fact of the matter, if the city moves forward with that project, the three schools in Gainesville don't have a stadium like Hawthorne has, so we have to do something. I mean, we, we gotta do something, we can build as, the options that you saw. So something has to be done there and, but there is, there are different pots of money that can be used for different things. And I think that as an organization that maybe our, our staff, you, you hear my voice is challenged right now, but that we, we have another session where we really walk through the, the, the education finance program in a manner that can be shared with everyone. We, we recorded it, it'd be. with everyone, we record it and it's sent out, because it's very constrictive, or restrictive, I should say, in what we can do, and really, we don't, we don't, we don't, we can't assess a mileage rate to do what we like to do. We're told, we really get just an allowance, so, whereas we may want to do and give a living wage, or an amount that keeps up with inflation, if that is not what the legislature appropriates and allocates to our district, we're not able to do that. Or we have to make, make some changes and make cuts to be able to do, and there are all of these different things that we have to do, and mandates from the state, and they don't always fund them. So a lot of those things, requirements, may have to come out of our general fund, and they're just, there are a lot of competing interests, and things that have to be done, and a lot of hard decisions that this board is gonna have to make, because there are some things that have not been done in the past, or there have been less than optimal decisions made in the past. And so now there's gonna have to be some cleanup and some correction, course correction going forward, and they're not gonna all be popular decisions with our community, but there are things that have to be done to maintain the financial structure so that we can serve and go forward, so. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to interject, I was gonna, I was chatting some notes down the street.
Bottom line, those are dollars, that capital that cannot be used toward employee salaries.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the bottom line is, we have capital funds, we have general funds, capital funds would be used for a sports facility, cannot be used for salary. Yeah, no, and I think Mr. Vu made it very clear, but, and I know he alone doesn't speak for the board, but he definitely speaks for me in the prioritization of some of our schools that have major capital issues.
And just in defense of my colleagues too, I don't think the whole building of a stadium is a terrible idea, I don't think any of my colleagues want to spend general funds on it, I just, if we do it, it needs to make financial sense, and I want it to be a revenue generator, you know, that's just really my position on it, we should make money.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I was a little surprised when I saw the Hawthorne basketball game. The kids throw the ball, and the people sitting in the front row, if they stick their legs out, they actually trip our basketball players. Well, so my point is that at some point too, along with buildings, we need to look at, because I saw in the mileage, we didn't even include athletic facilities in it, and yet some of our, and then sports teams come here and say, we don't want to play, there were actually people that wrote letters to FSHAA to say, don't hold the game at Hawthorne, so thankfully, they toed the line and said, no, you'll play, but it was a little surprising to me, that's.
Okay, I'm sorry, but we can't have a back and forth with the audience, especially because when you speak and you're not at the podium, no one can hear you watching online, and our recording doesn't get that, and it won't be on the transcript, so we can't do that. And I want to get us back on track, because we, do we still have citizens? Yes, okay, we need to get back on track.
Our next speakers are Rebecca Reagan, Graceland Duenez, and Nehirika Manda.
Good evening, my name is Rebecca Reagan, I'm gonna be reading a statement from Janet Gill from Gainesville High School. She said, "As a veteran teacher in Lashaw County Public Schools, I'm beyond depressed and frustrated. Monies in our district are not allocated with personnel in mind. Recently, one of our teachers' lounges was painted. This, in my opinion, was not necessary. Very few people use this particular lounge, as we have three lounges on campus. Teachers deserve better treatment and pay, and the district should be more transparent with how monies are spent. GHS was scheduled to be updated or improved a few years ago. This has still not happened. There are classrooms that have flooded, had mold so severe that no student was allowed in them, and the sewage lines are dangerously poisonous. I was told that we need new sewage lines, pipes, as the problem is not fixable. Unfortunately, we as teachers are programmed to think that we are servants of the state. We are made to believe that we don't matter, don't complain, at least you have a job. Until we receive a living wage and raises as other teachers in neighboring districts do, our morale will continue to be low. As always, every district surrounding Alachua County pays more to their teachers. Whatever the reason, it is unfair to the teachers who live here as living in Alachua County is more expensive than living in any of the surrounding counties. Show teachers that we matter and that the students and schools are important by giving us a long overdue raise." With the remainder of my time, I would also like to add my personal statements regarding ICE. You've heard concerns from teachers, parents, and students regarding your current policy around ICE and law enforcement entering our schools. Please show us the respect by acknowledging our fears and opening a discussion on the next agenda. What people are asking for is not radical, it's just the bare minimum protections for the students we've all sworn to protect. Am I supposed to not worry about what's potentially gonna happen to one of my students? I don't feel comfortable telling a student, I don't know what's gonna happen to you, and with no way to find out more information. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Graceland Duenez, and I'm here to talk about the period drive at Eastside High School. The period drive at Eastside High School was put into effect in January 2024 after over a year of planning with support and encouragement from school administration. We stocked bathrooms with menstrual supplies without opposition, and were permitted to continue doing so after the introduction of House Bill 389 in 2021 and its subsequent update in 2023. So it was very unprecedented that our initiative came under fire on the grounds that it violated unspecified provisions within the Parental Rights Act. When we agreed to terminate plans to disseminate surveys asking for student opinions on their experience with the drive, we expected the opposition to halt. However, we were even more surprised to hear that school board leaders held a meeting to discuss the drive's fate without our own or our principal's attendance. The context of this meeting has still not been disclosed to us. Since then, we have attempted to request time to meet with school board officials, but have not received a response, and without full understanding of the issue under hand, our principal has encouraged us to stop the drive in fear of being punished. We come here today demanding to know why our efforts are being banned, especially because House Bill 389 explicitly allows and encourages schools to provide menstrual products to students free of charge. Section 1,006.064 of the Florida statutes makes it so that school districts have to provide menstrual hygiene products, as they are explicitly defined as tampons and sanitary napkins for use in connection with the menstrual cycle, and that these products are permitted to be located in restrooms. Both laws say nothing about who should provide the products, but only request products do not display advertisements or text except for the brand name. Our boxes do not display advertisements for other organizations, nor Youth Action Fund, which is the nonprofit from which we've received a stipend to purchase menstrual products. We come here today, as I mentioned, to demand a response and clear explanation, especially from Mr. Spiliass and the other board members. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Nehirika, and I'm also a senior at Eastside High School, and I just wanted to emphasize the importance of this drive. Girls should not have to choose between having an education or bleeding through their clothes. This period drive was installed to establish equity over the learning opportunities at students. It was created so that girls could have the basic necessities that should have been provided in the first place. But prior to the period drive, inaccessibility to feminine hygiene products was taking over the educational experiences of many girls at Eastside. We heard stories in the bathrooms about girls who were left with no other choice but to leave school due to the lack of diverse hygiene products or overall inconvenience of location. Only able to turn to the nurse's office for help, a five-minute walk there and back plagued the students with the discomfort they shouldn't have had to experience in the first place. This system was not enough. With the limited access and bad location, we wanted to create another solution and eradicate the one-size-fits-all notion for its pads, which left many with continual discomfort or neglect. The period drive got rid of these obstacles. This initiative is used by the student body. As one of the runners of the drives, I know that girls around campus use these products, because by the time we go to refill the next week, all the products are already used up. With an accessible location in every corner, and a wide variety of pad sizes and tampons, girls were finally able to take care of themselves effectively and not waste 10 minutes of class time. By shutting down the period drive, it shuts down this liberation, and it therefore shuts down these students. It also builds upon the stigma that surrounds periods. It teaches girls that communal support for periods is something that is shameful or dispirited, and it also shows girls that their needs are not important and heard. All we ask for is a basic dignity. We ask to know why we shut down in the first place, we ask for our needs to be heard. As parents and educators and school board leaders, you must understand the need for this drive. Please allow us to continue. We are student-funded and student-run, and the Eastside community helps support these boxes. It's time that the district does as well. Thank you.
Our final three speakers are Leah Cohen, Amanda Crawford, and Ethan Maya DeNedel.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Crawford, I'm one of the parents of the girls here in FLS sign, and I'm here to show support for this initiative, for these girls who have taken their time, who have spent their volunteer hours in service of their fellow students, of their community, and of the district as a whole. These girls have put forth so much effort to not only initiate this drive, to go work and get grants to support the drive, the burden has been taken off of the school board to supply these products. They spend their time restocking these boxes, procuring, I'm not sure why, procuring the supplies that are needed to provide to these students, and I find it disappointing, to say the least, in the way that the drive was halted, in the closed-door politics that have taken place, in their repeated attempts to gain information and access to the reason the drive has been halted, and for their pleas to be ignored on multiple occasions. Again, when we talk about budget, when we talk about funds for the schools, this is something they've taken upon themselves to provide, to get these grants, with organizations that work with other educational institutions like the University of Florida. They've done their work, they've done their homework, these girls are in the IB program, it's already rigorous. This is something that they've taken upon themselves, and I just want to show that they not only have the parental support, but I'm hoping that they'll have the board support as well, that they'll be treated like citizens, that they'll be rewarded for their efforts, and that the threats of discipline, I'm gonna, hope, were just misinterpreted, and that in the future, the efforts like this will be encouraged rather than discouraged from the adults.
My name is Ethan Maya DeNedel. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but seeing the lack of response and eye contact from members of the dais, while members of your staff and community regarding law enforcement entering our schools and questioning and detaining children without parental consent or a warrant is simply insulting. I hope I'm wrong, and you all have been looking down to take notes on what people have said, but considering it's been brought up at the last two school board meetings, and nothing has been addressed, makes me not so sure. I know members of the board have their heart in the right place, and are fearful of potential repercussions from the state. I ask you though, how requiring parental consent for law enforcement to speak with their child, or for a warrant to detain a minor while they're at school wanting to learn is in any way controversial. Palm Beach County is requiring warrants for all law enforcement based, excuse me, Palm Beach County is requiring warrants for all law enforcement based on a policy they've had since 1980s, yet Alachua County seems unwilling, not unable, to take these basic steps to protect our vulnerable children. I ask that you all show some of the same bravery that staff and teachers have shown, and will continue to show as they have demonstrated, and put this on your next agenda so that we can have a discussion on this. In a state that prides itself on individual liberty and parental rights, I truly do not understand how this is even a question. Thank you.
Mr. Foote, do you have any callers?
Caller, please state your name, you have two minutes with the board.
Hi, thank you for taking my call, my name is April Tisher, and I am the Gainesville High School Football Quarterback Club President. I have been for the past five years. I tried to call in earlier when we were talking about Citizen Field. I just wanted to bring up one thing that hasn't really been discussed yet, and I just want to make sure that when the school board and the city is talking about this, we talk about transportation. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but currently, Beulah's, Eastside, GHS, has to pay for their teams to use Alachua County Public School buses to actually travel to their home games. The band also has to pay to use Alachua County Public School buses to travel to the home games. If the cheerleaders come, they find their own way, or they too have to pay to rent buses. As you can imagine, that's very expensive. Football takes two buses for GHS, our band takes three. They're about $500 for each game, we have five home games a year. That money is a great expense to all the teams, and all the proposals that were brought tonight, playing at Santa Fe for GHS, playing at Newbury for Beulah, playing at Hawthorne for Eastside, still includes using busing. Even if the field is completely redone, and everybody still plays at Citizen Field, we still have the issue of busing, and that's something that Hawthorne, Newbury, and Santa Fe, they don't have to incur those costs every year. We still have to take charter buses when we go to away games that are further, and again, remember, we can't take public school buses until after four o'clock when they're done, so taking school buses is not an option when we're going further away for away games. So I just want the cost of transportation to be considered into all these factors, as well as understanding when we don't have our own home field, we can't put banners up that are there permanently, we can't have permanent sponsors up on our scoreboard, so we are also losing revenue in that way. Just wanted to have that as part of your conversation when you're looking forward. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name, you have two minutes with the board.
My name is Laura Gonzalez.
Go ahead with your comment, you have two minutes.
Okay, hello, I'm calling as a concerned resident of Alachua County, and also as a teacher educator who has collaborated with public school teachers across the US for over a decade. What I've learned in my time and my collaborations with teachers is that all our teachers want is for their students to thrive and to be successful. But our students can't thrive, they're constantly in fear, which is exactly what's happening now in our schools, with all this conversation and lack of clarity around policy regarding ICE. Teachers can't help students thrive, they don't know how to keep their students safe. We need better guidance for protecting all of our students, not just those who are immigrants. Many of these unsafe policies have been in place much before the current administration, so this isn't a question of the current administration or not. It's just time to revisit all of our policies and procedures so that we can provide a safe environment for all of our students, even when much of our country is unstable, so I wanted to urge everyone to support providing clear policies for keeping our students safe, and making sure that our teachers have what they need to have a stable environment for our students. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name, you have two minutes with the board.
My name is Jeff DeNedel. I've served in Gainesville for more than 30 years, all of our children rent to public schools here. We think very highly of the public education that they got, and I'm very, very concerned about the lack of response and concern on the part of the board with regard to the threat of trauma and fear, without not taking any action against ICE invading schoolrooms, taking children out, but for force. The time to address this in terms of policy is now, if it's not too late already. A need to take this very seriously. Public education and our schools are supposed to be a safe place to learn and to grow, not a target area for invasion and fear, which is what we're facing now. A need to remember that priority is the education of our children, and as a part of that, the protection of the children, all of them, from the kind of invasive, frightening, trauma- trauma-inducing actions that ICE indicates and stands for.
Caller, please state your name. You have two minutes with the board.
Gracia Fernandez. I am calling to say I strongly oppose allowing ICE to aid public schools. Schools should be safe havens where all students, regardless of their immigration status, can learn and grow without the constant fear of separation from their families. I'm frankly appalled, this is even a point of discussion. We are at a point in history where neutrality is complacency, and by allowing ICE to target these spaces, you're contributing to an atmosphere that's already full of fear and insecurity. This is not the time for cowardice. I urge you to stand up for the rights and safety of all students and protect our schools as places of refuge rather than ponds in Trump's xenophobic game of white nationalism. The future of our children is at stake, and this is a moment where we must act with moral clarity and unwavering courage. It's crucial that you make decisions that will leave a legacy of compassion and justice in our county. We do not need any more performative allyship, but for you to stand up for our children with your words and with your actions.
Caller, please state your name. You have two minutes with the board.
Hi, my name is Leah Cohen. I am a parent of a fifth grade Elatra County Public School student and two graduates of Elatra County Public Schools. As a parent, I'm appalled that you would allow ICE or law enforcement to enter, question, and take a child without cause or parental consent or notification. Trauma is toxic to learning, and your current ICE protocol, in fact, your current law enforcement protocol, cause is causing trauma for all students and parents with kids in public school. It takes away our parental rights. You have an opportunity to implement protocol like other schools have in Florida that follows all your legal obligations rather than burying your heads in the sand out of fear. You have an opportunity to ensure ICE and hate groups impersonating ICE don't take children, causing trauma to the child, their family, and the school and teachers and staff. You should not be talking about caring, about absenteeism, test scores, school grades, learning outcomes, including student outcomes in mathematics, which was discussed on the agenda tonight, and the rest of it, if you do not address the trauma that will erode all of these and work with the community experts who have invested time and energy to know how to guide schools to comply with all of the laws. Thank you.
That concludes citizen input.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. On to board member and superintendent requests. Mr. Vu.
Okay, um, you know, me with my list. So first, just I want to learn more about what's going on here, about the situation here, but it just feels really strange, like, I don't know whether this is a game of telephone or a misinterpretation of the law. It sounds like, just based on what our speakers have told us, the law is on our side. So if the district gave other advice to this school principal, I would like to know that. And then also, just following up on Rawlings, just I know that we are surveying parents right now, and so, so thank you, Dr. Patton, for that suggestion, that was a great idea. So one thing I do want to add to that, are we also surveying staff at Rawlings right now? Um, I, yeah, we are? Okay, good. Thank you so much for that. Um, I didn't ask, so that's on me. And I can follow up with this you as well, but I know I've been really pushing to that we continue doing the climate survey and finding some version of that that we'll, we like and that we want to give for an extended period of time, so we have actually relative and comparative data year over year. And again, you know me, I think we should do it quarterly, but we could start yearly and see what's going on there. And then I would just like an update on strategic planning. I know that's something that the board tabled way back in October before I even sat here, but what was provided to the board, obviously, they rejected and wanted something better. When I asked what was, you know, done and all the work, I was given one sheet of paper, and to me, I'm like, we spent $100,000 on one sheet of paper, um, which is a great, I write, a strategic plan costs that much money, but it, you know, it's actually a plan. So I would just love to actually see the results of that. Thank you.
If no one has anything else, this meeting is adjourned at 9:31 PM.